Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Woburn City Council of January 21st, 2025. Just a reminder to everyone, tonight's meeting is being recorded for broadcast. Also, please silence your cell phone. If you can, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read, "Councilor Campbell will participate in this meeting under the city of Woburn's participation policy. Councilor Campbell will be joining by telephone and all votes will be by roll call." Lindsay, if you will call a roll, please.
Council Campbell.
President.
Council de Mers.
President.
Council de Mambro.
President.
Council Farulo.
President.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Present.
Council Papalatto.
Present.
Council Toro.
Present.
Council Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present.
First item on the agenda is reading of the previous meeting journal.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting journal and approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Roll, please.
Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Next.
I'll make a motion that the next two matters be referred to public hearing.
Second.
Motion in the second. Roll, please.
There was a motion in the second to send the next two collective, uh, send the next two off to public hearings. This is both for two N-Star petitions, one to 300 Mission One Road, one to 425 Washington Street by roll call. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda we have is a petition by Sri Ganraj LLC for a special permit under Section 5.1, subsection 29, for a fast food restaurant at 100 Sylvan Road, AKA 300 Trade Center, Suite 1410. A committee report from the Committee on Special Permits was received ought to pass with the following conditions. One, hours of operation shall be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days. And two, the special permit shall be received aft, shall be reviewed after six months. Excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this petition with an added condition.
Open the public hearing first.
Oh, make a motion to open up public hearing?
Second.
Motion in the second.
Motion in the second, open the public hearing by roll call. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And, huh? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to open the public, uh, excuse me, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and that the special permit be granted as, with the conditions as outlined.
And on the motion, I would like to add a condition.
I'll withdraw the underlying.
I would like to add one condition.
Making a motion for a condition?
Yes, I'm making one motion for a condition, and that condition is that the special permit is non-transferable.
Second.
The motion in the second, roll, please.
The motion in second, it was for a special permit, um, that the special permit is not transferable. This is condition number three now. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Grant special permit with the three conditions as agreed to.
Second.
A motion in the second, roll, please.
There was a motion made in second to close the public hearing and to grant the special permit with the three conditions as outlined. Roll call. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
That passes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda we have is Auto Works Inc. for a special permit under Section 5.1, subsection 44, and to amend previously issued special permit dated May 27, 2021. A communication was received, a communication dated January 16, 2025, was received from Attorney Thomas A. Mullin of the Special Counsel regarding Auto Works Inc. et al.
Make a motion that the communication be received may pad of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll, please.
Motion in the second to accept the communication. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Attorney Giuliano, how are you?
Very well, Mr. President. Good evening. For the record, Attorney James Giuliano, Giuliano Law Group, 607 Main Street here in Woburn, on behalf of the petitioner, Auto Works Inc. We did have exhaustive discussions on this over the last few months. Obviously, I don't have to go through the history of this case, but this was in land court. We were back with the council to try one more effort to see if we could get the amendment to the special permit that was issued a few years back to add a spray booth. So after discussions with my client, uh, my client does want to work with the city. He's here for a while, and he would like to withdraw his application in its entirety. City Solicitor Savardi is here if anybody has any questions relating to the procedure. But I can tell you, um, where this stands in land court, there was a settlement agreement that basically stipulated that we shall bring it back to city council. Regardless of the decision with city council withdrawn, denied, accepted, the land court appeal would be dismissed to the city. So that's the avenue we're looking to take. We are withdrawing our application with the city, and we will be, obviously, due to the stipulation with the land court, withdrawing and get rid of that as well. So that's where we stand. That's our, our, our quest, request tonight. So any questions, certainly, I know there's a lot of procedure with this case in particular, but any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Attorney Giuliano? Yes, Attorney, Council de Mers.
Also, a question of procedure of the body here is that, is this what, is this a request to withdraw without prejudice? Or withdraw with prejudice? Because, I mean, this is, this has been going on a little bit, but you just said with bra. So I'm, I'm wondering, is there a distinction with that?
It's a great question. There would be a distinction. I think, um, we would withdraw the application as it was sort of a denial. So it would be with prejudice, and that would coincide with the land court stipulation as well. So obviously, that's good for two years. I don't foresee anything coming up in front of the council, you know, in that period of time, obviously, or even after the two years in that location. So it would be with prejudice.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor, for that question. Anyone else? Seeing no one.
Make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
A motion in the second. Roll, please.
Motion made in second to open the public hearing. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward regarding the Auto Works. Seeing no one.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed and that the matter be granted a leave to withdraw with prejudice.
Second.
A motion in the second, roll, please.
There's a motion in second to close the public hearing and to grant the leave to withdraw with prejudice. Roll call. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda we have is Tree Top Home LLC for a special permit under Section 7.3 to raise a pre-existing non-conforming four-family dwelling and rebuild a new four-family dwelling at 5 Bennett Street. The communication dated January 16, 2025, was received from Attorney James Giuliano requesting continuance to February.
Make a motion that the communication be received may pad of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll, please.
Motion in the second to accept the communication by roll call. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Attorney Giuliano, again, how are you?
Good evening again, Mr. President. For the record, Attorney James Giuliano, Giuliano Law Group, 607 Main Street here in Woburn, on behalf of Tree Top Inc. I mentioned at the last hearing that we would have something. I do have something. I'm not ready to submit for the record just yet, but I, I do have some sort of renderings that are almost complete, and I can tell you that we were able to shrink the existing footprint, what is, from what is there now. So the existing footprint of the building is about 2,300 square feet. We have proposed about 2,000 square feet of footprints, and not only do we shrink our last proposal, we, it is shrinking what is there right now. So I think that's a massive improvement. We are trying to squeeze out a little bit more with the grades that would shrink it even below 2,000 square feet. So I think that's a vast improvement that the neighbors can get in, uh, get on board with. I also think, uh, we had some discussions with some of the neighbors regarding tonight, regarding what we're doing. Essentially, we're proposing three-bedroom units, which is a drastic decrease. So the net floor area is also decreased. So I think this is a good project that we can bring in front of the council next month and have this approved, but I'm, I'm pleased with, with the architect and the engineer and what they have done. Took a while, but we're here, and we were able to accomplish that. So I did want to bring that up, and I wanted to thank the council for, obviously, their patience with this so far.
Questions for Attorney Giuliano? Yes, Councilor de Mers.
Attorney Giuliano, so at this point, the next meeting in February, you will have, there will be plans before us?
I told the architect and the engineer that I wanted plans this week. They assured me plans this week. So this will be disseminated to the engineering department, PPW, the neighbors, and the council well in advance. So yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Just from the chair, Attorney Giuliano, I have received some correspondence, this is my ward, requesting that you withdraw and refile. That's one person. What I'm going to say is, I am going to ask you to do that if the next time you come in front of us here and you don't have anything solid. So in our next dates, being February 4th, uh, February 18th, let's, let's get this done.
Yep. I agree, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion in the second. Roll, please.
Motion in the second, open the public hearing. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the council on February 4th.
Second. Second.
A motion in the second, roll, please.
Motion in the second to continue this public hearing to February 4th. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda we.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda we have is a public hearing regarding four Maeward Terrace nuisance hearing. There was a communication received late from Commissioner, uh, Thomas Quinn.
Make a motion to accept the communication from Commissioner Quinn dated 1/21/2025 at 6:33 p.m., which reads, "Good evening. Regarding above, the property owner Deborah McLaughlin left me a voicemail this morning at 10:30 a.m., which I received when I was back in the office at early afternoon. I did not call her back shortly after, or I did call her back shortly after and was unable to reach, sorry for the delay in the update." So I'm going to make a motion that the city clerk send a follow-up letter to Deborah McLaughlin to appear before the council on February 4th, 2025, at our next regular meeting.
Second.
So I have a motion to accept the communication and then, as well as to send a communication to the property owner.
To Deborah McLaughlin, yes, that she appear before the council on February 4th.
Motion in the second, roll, please.
Council Campbell, did you get all that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll, please.
Motion in the second, open the public hearing. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the council on February 4th.
Second.
Motion in the second, roll, please.
Motion in the second to continue this to February 4th. All those in, oh, excuse me. Council Campbell.
Aye.
Council de Mers.
Aye.
Council de Mambro.
Aye.
Council Farulo.
Aye.
Council Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Council Papalatto.
Aye.
Council Toro.
Aye.
Council Viola.
Aye.
And President Dillon.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda we have is a, President Dillon, per request of the mayor for a proposed amendment to the Woburn zoning ordinance, Section 5.1, subsection 79, to allow municipal uses to be permitted as a right in all zoning districts, and there are no communications.
Very good. Mayor Concanon, how are you tonight, sir?
I'm well, Mr. President. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. To you, Mr. President, members of the council. Thanks for your, uh, the opportunity to speak tonight. Not sure if this matter is going to committee or not, but I did ask that the planning director, the building commissioner, and the city solicitor come tonight in case there are any questions, whether it goes to committee or not. If you do choose to send it to committee, they'll be available there as well for any additional questions. As I mentioned at the outset of this process, the impetus for the request that's in front of you tonight, the request for the municipal use exemption, so that municipal uses are permitted as a right in all zoning districts, the very specific impetus for this request was the fire station building committee that has begun its work in the last month or two. As you know, thankfully, with gratitude to this council, you supported a $30 million bond authorization that will allow us to build two new fire stations here in Woburn and renovate the third, the remaining station. So we began the process, as we have in the past, of establishing a building committee made up of city officials, members of the city council, and these meetings, as you know, are open to the public. So it was during one of those meetings early on when we were discussing ways to ensure that this project would stay on schedule and stay under budget, and we were trying to forecast possible obstacles. and we were trying to forecast possible obstacles. We know that we've just come through a period of time with supply chain delays and a significant impact on construction over the last several years. We were brainstorming things that we could do to ensure that we stayed on time and on budget and trying to understand what those obstacles might otherwise be. And it was brought up by one of the members of the committee that there is an opportunity to ensure that the process moves expeditiously if there were to be a municipal use exemption for a building such as a fire station. We talked a little bit further about that in committee, and I learned that here in Woburn, we did have that municipal use exemption until 1992, when the city council at the time voted to require special permits for such uses. I also learned that there are other communities around us that do, in fact, have a municipal use exemption. Some of them carve out a residential exclusion to that. Others allow municipal use by right in all districts. So, it was during those meetings that we began to explore a possible way to move the process, specifically of building Station 4 in East Woburn as quickly and uneventfully as we possibly could. So, the idea was brought up that this municipal use exemption could be brought forward to both the planning board and the city council for discussion, debate, review, and see if there was an appetite to include some variation of a municipal use exemption into our code for this purpose. During the discussion, there were points about whether we would be adhering to the spirit of transparency, openness, public input, city council input, and because of the nature of the building committees that we've run in the city over the past several years, many years now, and that we are conducting as well for this particular project, it was felt that there would be adequate input from the public. The city council would be numerous opportunities for folks to be heard and that those safeguards would be in place. So, the first step in the process was to propose a broad municipal use exemption and put it into the process. Step one being the planning board. So, at the planning board meeting, I gave the same background I just gave to you, also brought the building commissioner, the planning director, and the city solicitor to offer their background on how this works and how it might work here. They also discussed, again, they reiterated the goals I had of trying to ensure that we did not encounter any obstacles that would delay the building of the new fire station in East Woburn or add unnecessary costs. So, that presentation was made to the planning board. I hope you've all had a chance to review that meeting, either the minutes or watch the meeting. I thought it was a pretty good discussion. There was talk about tweaking what was in front of them to carve out a residential exclusion, but at the end of the day, the end of the meeting, the planning board voted 7-0 in favor of the municipal use exemption. So, the next step was to have their recommendation forwarded to the city council, which I know you have in front of you, for discussion, debate, deliberation, and potential tweaking of what is in front of you, and that's why we're here tonight. As I said, I'm not sure what this council wants to do. Send it to committee or delve deeply into it in this forum tonight. We can do whatever you'd like. But I think as long as people understand what we're trying to do, we're essentially and very specifically trying to build a fire station in East Woburn. As you know, we're also trying to build one on the west side, and we're working on identifying the best location for that. So, Station 5 on the west side, that rebuild will lag a little bit behind Station 4. But as of now, we have a plan in place. This council has seen the preliminary design of the proposed Station 4 in East Woburn. You've seen a cost estimate for that project. That's what we'd like to proceed with as soon as possible. We'd like to begin demo of Station 4 in East Woburn as soon as April 1st. We have a plan to move Engine 4 and the members who work there, ensuring adequate coverage for the area, but move them out and actually begin putting up fences and taking down the building as soon as possible. So, it's in that context that I appear before you tonight, asking for your support. And the form in which that support takes is part of the process. If this council was inclined to amend the table of uses and amend our zoning code even more narrowly than what's in front of you with a generic municipal use exemption, I would take no offense to that. I understand that's the process. I think if this council would entertain the notion of providing for a municipal use exemption to build a fire station in any district in the city by right, that would accomplish what we're trying to do. There's no other big plan or grand scheme to build some other municipal building that no one shared with you yet. That's not the case. That's not happening. So, we're talking about a fire station, and we're talking about a fire station in East Woburn and getting it done as soon as possible. So, I just want to make sure that we have the context of what's being asked. And I'm more than happy to work with this council to get to a point where we say yes and we can get that done. As I say, I've got the rest of the team here if there's any specific questions. But if you'd prefer that we go to committee and dig deeper into it at that point, that's fine, too. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor DeMers. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, you and I had a conversation during a meeting on Friday amongst other issues about this particular ordinance change. And, you know, at the time during that meeting, I was receptive in the sense of, you know, looking at the ways in which, moving forward on those fire stations, we can save taxpayer money, streamline the process, and get this going. Well, over the past 12 to 24 hours, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the residents. And as is with the just generic municipal use exemption, I don't know if I could get there to support it as is because there's many issues that could come up that would require a municipal use that would be very different than what we could look at in the terms of our existing fire departments because they're basically going to be either onsite or pretty close. So, what I would be worried about, not necessarily is you, Mr. Mayor, because I think your convictions on this matter are in the right place. What I have to worry about is the mayor in 10 to 15 years. What is that mayor going to do? What is that city government or city department heads going to be doing? What type of power will they choose to wield? Rather than just promises that community meetings will be held, there'll be a building committee and so forth. I think that's the concerns a lot of residents have because they've got to look out for their 30-year lookout and what community are they going to be living in then. I think this deserves a hearing before the ordinance committee just to see if there are compromises that we can get to, limitations that we can put in, added guardrails to make this more just about the fire stations and less about any type of additional water treatment facilities we have to make in the future. If we want to go the route of a municipal light department, where would that be? And I know probably back in 1992 when they did it, there was a purpose behind it. I don't know what structure was probably being looked at to being built back then because that was a little bit before my time in city government. But I think that there was probably a motive behind it. And I think now, and it's not necessarily us here tonight and this, in our local government here, but I think in the current climate right now, with such mistrust in what government can do by just saying, "Hey, trust us. This is what we're doing it for." I think those added guardrails added in to any type of ordinance that would allow a municipal structure being built somewhere where it isn't right now, I think those guardrails are a fair approach to hopefully coming to a- coming to an agreement where we can get those fire stations taken care of and public inputs there and the citizens are protected because we have the average citizen come up here and file for special permits for their needs on their property and their businesses. So, I think the city should probably follow the same rules, too, for the most part. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Thank you. Mayor Concanon, thank you for that very eloquent description. I appreciate that. But here are some of the takeaways that I got from it, that we want to proceed with the project as uneventfully as possible. We want to ensure things stay on track and on budget. Of course, we all want to do that, too. But what I see happening here, even changing this just for fire stations, is chipping away at the rights of the people in this city. To have a public hearing, to be heard on that side of the podium, sir, to express how they feel about how the building looks, how the lighting is going to be, all the same things that we do every single day. It is their right to have that process. I'm a little concerned that this came up and nobody knew about it. Nobody, so, let's face it, Mr. Mayor. At the end of the day, many people didn't know this thing was coming down the pipe until about 24 hours ago. So, I have to ask myself-
It's been in front of the planning board and the council for two months.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've answered my question. At the end of the day, the most important thing is that people are aware and that they have a say in the process. I don't know why a fire station would be any different than anything else. Every project that I, for 18 years on this city council, we've had many projects come before us. Are you concerned, is there something going on that you're concerned that there's going to be pushback? What, and at the end of the day, there's been these building meetings, building committee meetings. Those hearings afford no rights to the residents whatsoever. Zero.
They have the right to be heard.
They actually don't.
No, they do.
No, they don't, Mayor. They don't.
Well, we've had two meetings and we've had members of the public.
It's not a public hearing. There's no requirement that they're allowed to speak. I'm speaking right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. There's no requirement that people are given an opportunity to speak at any of those meetings. What I also don't understand is why, if this project is so important, why hasn't a special permit already been filed? And we're saying, "Well, we're halfway through. We need to speed up the pro-" I feel very strongly, and please, everybody on this council, listen to the people who reached out to us in the last 24 hours about this matter. If we change it just for fire stations, the next thing is, let's change it for the next thing. Let's change it for the building next door. We don't need to do that. We have a process in place. We've never not had a project go forward because of that, that I'm aware of. You've been involved in many of those very same projects, Mayor Concanon, when you sat here for 10 years. So, again, I don't understand what's driving this because there's no history to prove otherwise. And let's just proceed with the process. Let's let our residents have the rights to a public hearing, to speak at that podium, be recognized, and everything is documented, and they get a say in the process. That's all. It's pretty simple. To me, it's pretty simple. The rest of this is nice, but it does not, does nothing for the residents of this city but take away their rights. And I'm sorry, that might be tough to hear, but it is. That is true. And I know it was at the planning board. We all know it was at the planning board. There's no compelling argument made at the planning board. And planning board is advisory to us, and they're not elected officials. We represent the people of the city. They are not, I don't think they're elected officials, right? They're appointed by the mayor, yes?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So, again, I don't think any of these projects are going to be in jeopardy by us following the process that has been very successful to date. And I will not support it. I will not support changing it just for fire stations because some of you have been on this council for several years. You have witnessed people coming to us, asking for one thing, and then coming back within two years and saying, "Hey, this worked. Let's add on to it." Let's be cautious here. Somebody make some compelling argument to me why we should take the rights of our residents away. I haven't heard that. I haven't heard it from the mayor. I haven't heard it, I'm sorry, from Counselor DeMers yet. You were suggesting a compromise. There shouldn't be a compromise here. It's too important. Don't do it. That's all I have to say on the matter for right now. Thank you, President Dillon, for the floor.
Counselor DeMers.
Well, to that effect, Counselor Mercer Bruin, all I was saying was, I think this deserves a hearing, to hear those discussions out. Based on the fact of what you just said, that there aren't many folks who knew about this in full until 12 to 24 hours, I don't understand why we can't go another two weeks. We will have the committee hearing next Wednesday, oh, excuse me, next Monday, and then we'll be back here on February 4th. Everybody will have a true understanding about what's going on. They'll hear all sides of it. Councilors here will be able to ask any additional questions they get from having more time to speak with their constituents to see if this is the route that they want to go. I don't think we should be denying any type of document here this evening without having a hearing in front of the committee to hear.
This is, yeah, this is a hearing.
We would have plenty of time to draw questions out of our constituents and submit them to the mayor and the professionals that we have here in City Hall. And then we have a full discussion rather than just tonight when tempers are high by cons- because we heard from, I heard from a lot of constituents today. Many of them didn't realize I had a nine-to-five job as well.
Yeah, well, at the end, yeah, I-
But it's one of those things where I think there's questions, and a lot of those questions need to be answered as well because if we don't move forward on this, we should have those answers in the record as to what was discussed, why we decided the way we did. I know you're firm in your principles on this. I totally understand that.
This isn't about my principles.
Well, no.
This is about the residents of the city.
You've seen-
Sorry. My apologies. My apologies, President Dillon.
You seem to have made up your mind already. Some of us might not have.
Again, I, not only did I make up my mind, that without a doubt, there is nothing here or this presentation that I have heard that would even remotely move this for me to take away the legal rights of the residents of this city. I don't care how many other cities and towns do it. That's not how we do things here. So-
Counselor DeMers.
I would just say, I had one constituent at least mention the thought of the exemption for fire stations. So, I think that that person should have additional information provided on how we could put those guardrails in. That's all I'm saying. And I'll present that constituent's email at committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before I move on to another counselor, any response that you'd like to say, Mayor Concanon?
I guess I would ask, do we afford the same rights you're speaking about when we build a school here in Woburn? Public elementary or secondary school?
We've had many-
They're allowed by right in all districts.
But we've had many public hearings when we build the schools and what they're going to look like and how we're going to- Absolutely, Mayor. And you were here for at least one of them.
I've been at public meetings on the building of schools, just as I've been at public meetings on the buildings of fire stations.
Public hearings.
Public meetings.
Public hearings.
Public meetings. And again, I would just point you to our table of uses, section 5.1, where elementary and secondary schools are allowed by right in all districts. And I guess I would question why schools are different than fire stations.
Again, I've sat through many public hearings for our schools. The Reeves, the Wyman, the Goodyear. But I will defer the floor for now. And Counselor DeMers, at the end of the day, if this thing is going to go to committee, all I heard was, "Rush, rush, rush. We need to get this. We need-" Well, that's what I heard as, again, are these not your words?
Well, if I could.
Are these not your words, Mayor? Proceed with the project as uneventfully as possible. Proceed with the project as uneventfully as possible. And that means, right, to me, we don't want, we don't want any issues coming up from the public. That's what I hear when I hear those words.
Would you like me to correct that, or?
Sure. You didn't say uneventfully as possible?
No, I did, but it's not about input from the public. It's about obstacles, potential obstacles. That's what I meant. And I'm not trying to rush anything. I'd just like to get the fire stations built as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
They won't overdo.
Yes, sir.
And the one in East Woburn is the one we want to tackle first. I'd like to get it done as soon as we can, not rushing anybody. We have a schedule. We've been meeting. We've been trying to advance this expeditiously, efficiently.
Without filing for the special permit. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, it sounds all quite eloquent, but not...
I'm sorry?
You had the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, again, the committee is working hard every day to try to get fire stations built here in the city of Woburn. We're engaged with the design professionals, the team, the project manager. We have a schedule we'd like to stick to. This came about simply as a result of trying not to incur any obstacles. If this council is not inclined to support this exemption or any compromise exemption, that's fine. We are prepared to pursue the special permit option, just trying to ensure that things go smoothly and get a station built. That's really all this is about. This is not a battle, not a battle from my side. Don't want it to be a battle at all. Really just wanted to have a discussion. Had one with the planning board, like to have one with the city council. If it's not the will of the council to touch this at all, that's fine. We'll proceed, and we'll make it work. Again, I point to the, our own table of uses where we have exemptions already listed. And things seem to be working okay. I guess I would just ask that the council at least look at it through the lens. If you're going to build a school, it's allowed by right in all districts. If you're going to build a fire station, should it be the same standard or should there be a different standard? Completely up to you, and I respect whatever decision you make.
President Dillon? Can I have just one follow-up?
I'm going to go to Counselor Papalatto, Counselor Viola, then Counselor Campbell, then I'll go back to the people, and Counselor Toil. Counselor Papalatto.
Thank you. So, you were here a couple of weeks ago, and you kind of educated us a little bit on what you were trying to push through here. And I think there was general concern, and you said, don't worry, we'll fill you in on the details. And you're trying to do that. I respect the fact that you do that.
I thought we'd do that in committee, Bill, but that's fine.
Yep, okay. And as everybody said in the last few days, the phone lines are lighting up, because people, and I'll be perfectly honest with you about the feedback, that part of this is me and part of it is residents. And these are questions that came up around, there isn't one call that I received, and I can't speak for the rest of the group, that supported this. Each and every one of them stated, does the administration think that they're above the rest of the rules? Why are there different rules for the, for city buildings versus a private developer The other thing that jumped out is around, it was touched upon here around public hearings. So, you mentioned putting a building committee together. I think you already have one for that.
Yes, we do.
And, but the problem that they've got on that is, they're not elected officials. This group is, we are elected officials. And if the constituents don't like the job that we're doing, they go into that ballot box and they vote just like everybody else does. And they felt like the people that would be making those decisions in the building committee, that doesn't apply to because they're appointed. Just, I'm giving you some facts, just a process for the next discussion on this. And you've answered some of the questions already about, is it a specific building? Are buildings that you are targeting? I didn't have the answer to that. And I just feel like there's a ground swell of negativity towards this for some of those reasons that I've heard. So, I'll stop there, and you can speak.
No, I appreciate your concerns, Bill, and those of your constituents. And no, the administration and/or the city, speaking for the city, we do not feel we're above the rules. I would just remind people that what we're talking about is city projects for the benefit of residents of the city, approved by the city, the body, to proceed. We're not talking about a supermarket or a gas station or an office building. We're talking about a use that's essential to operating the city, approved by a body of the city to proceed. People want a fire station. We're spending a lot of money to get a fire station. You know, we are the ones petitioning and paying for and blessing this particular project. It's for the city. It's not for a private entity. So, I think it kind of goes along with what I was saying about the schools. And we have, you know, we have other exemptions in our code about essential uses. If someone, if you need, you know, a gas hookup to your house, it's an essential use. And, you know, we provide for those things in our code. We don't ban them from certain districts. I would, I guess I would say that a fire station would likely fall under anyone's broad definition of an essential use, necessary to the operation of our city government, protection of our residents. And again, this was not intended to be a dividing petition or a battleground, simply a way to perhaps expedite the building of a fire station. You know, bear in mind, and I'll state the obvious, we're talking about putting a fire station where there is a fire station currently. We're not cramming it into a place that people aren't familiar with. And if this city council is concerned about, you know, what a mayor might do 10, 15 years from now, and it won't be me, this council has the ability to change this ordinance next week, and the week after, and the week after. It's completely in your purview to allow or restrict as you see fit. City council did it in 1992. Any number of city councils could have done it between then and now. I simply thought this was something we could talk about in the context of advancing the fire station, knowing that there'd be discussion, debate, pros, cons, potentially a compromise that narrowly tailors a solution to a problem. And again, as I said a minute ago, I can live with the outcome, whatever it is. I'm not looking to throw the gauntlet down here. That's not what this is about. This is simply a discussion to see if we can move this along.
All right. And the other question is, why, why don't you want to go through the normal process to have this happen? Is there history where it's got knocked out?
No, no, it's not, I mean...
Because this group seems very willing to work with you.
Yeah, I tell you, if there was drama and history, I'd tell you. This was not driven by a fear of something catastrophic happening. It was really just staying on budget. I totally respect that we have a bond authorization for a significant amount of money to build two new fire stations. And I'm going to do everything I possibly can to get them built on time and on budget. This is one of those things I'm trying to do. I'm throwing out there as a way to ensure that that happens. If this council doesn't want to do that and wants to include the additional steps of a special permit from the city, by the city, for the city, that's okay. We'll proceed down that path. But if this council had an appetite to remove a potential obstacle, I'd applaud that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I know you and I have spoke about this previously.
Yep.
Just like Counselor DeMers, other counselors, I too have received phone calls, texts, emails within the last 48 to 20, 24 to 48 hours from residents, not just my ward across the city regarding this. Seems like the main theme is that people are worried about they're not going to have a voice in what comes forward in front of them, or what is going to be built. Counselor Bruin brought up the fact that, excuse me, that these meetings are meetings. They're not hearings. However, I have sat in one of these fire, building fire committee meetings, and public was able to speak. But that doesn't mean that if they bring up a condition that they'd like put on the project, that doesn't mean that the committee is going to adhere to that, just as so the special permit committee wouldn't adhere to it as well. It's up to that body.
Right.
But I'd like to hear more from what the public has to say regarding this. Right now, I'm still undecided, but I'd like to hear more from the public.
As would I.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Dillon. Mayor Concanon, thank you for your explanation on the reasons why you put the petition for this to come before us. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I have had concerns from the very beginning, as you all know. My view is, we should not be voting in favor of this petition. For over 30 years, this ordinance has been on the books. And the reason that we have it is to protect the residents of Woburn from the possibility of city government overreach. This petition expands the authority of the mayor, not just you, Mayor Concanon, but any future mayor, as you know. And with their different ideas, and I know that you have your heart in the right place. I understand that. And, but I cannot vote in favor of this. I don't want to try to tweak it and put just for a fire station. I don't like the idea at all that we vote for it so that the fire station can go in and then we go ahead and vote to change the zoning again. That, to me, is a very bad idea. That's just like a wind blowing here and there. How can anybody ever trust what our zoning ordinances will be for? That just, yeah, anyway, that idea is not good. My biggest concern is exactly what the other counselors have been talking about. We will be losing, the city council will be losing considerable authority by agreeing with this, by letting this petition move forward. This is why we were elected. We're here to represent the residents. And if something like this is passed, their voices no longer are heard because their voices are heard through us. That, that's how it works. Obviously, we can have a public hearing. We can have all of that. But this strips our, strips our authority. And I just think, think it's wrong. It's a wrong precedent. I don't think this is the direction we should go to. I don't want it to go to committee. I believe we should vote it down tonight. And if that's the way it goes, then, then okay. But I just don't think that this is a good idea to have this pass. And I guess that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Toil.
Thank you. If I may, I have a couple of questions and then a thought. First, Mayor Concanon, you mentioned schools are built by right, right? I think we've, we've seen that with daycares in the city under our use chart. My only question is, so...
I'm talking about public schools.
Public schools, yes, yes, yes. In situations like that, you mentioned that there's always public hearings or public meetings and such. I've only been on the council for a year, right? So, I'm relatively new. How do those meetings, or when something's being built by right in a situation like a public school, how do those generally get handled till public get input compared to something like a fire station as it stands now, which would be under a special permit? How does that get handled? That's my first question.
The ones I'm familiar with, there have been school building committees, similar to our fire station building committee. Early on in the process, the committees meet, you know, probably a couple of times a month anyway. And then as they get into the project, maybe it's once a month, there's a, there's a group, usually a city council member is a member of the committee. The public is afforded the right to weigh in and speak. As Counsel Viola said, it doesn't necessarily mean that the idea that a member of the public has gets incorporated, but that doesn't happen here at city council special permit either. They get heard, and then the council decides whether to incorporate them. But the school building committees that I've seen and attended in the past, that's the model we're using for the fire station building committee, all throughout the process, all the way up until occupancy. A standing committee meets on a periodic basis in a public forum. All the business is conducted in public. There are minutes. There are votes. And there's an opportunity, as I said, for the public to be heard.
Thank you. Another question. Sorry, if I can ask our commissioner, our building commissioner, sorry, Tom, can I ask you a question? Do you mind? Sorry to put you on the spot. It's my understanding that, again, I'm, I'm not offering my opinion at this, it's just questions I ask. If this hypothetically were to pass, or even if it weren't, if it went through special permit, the city would still be required to pull a building permit for the construction of any public structure, correct?
Correct.
And what type of oversight does your office provide and authority do you have in terms of these structures? Like, I know we have an ordinance in terms of height requirements and things like that, but what else does your, in the, there's code compliance with electrical plumbing and building. But in terms of aesthetics and things, does your office have any type of oversight in terms of things like that?
The state of Massachusetts Building Code does not regulate aesthetics. It is a document, a working document, that requires the minimum standards for compliance with all life safety issues, as well as structural issues. You have to meet the minimum standards to obtain building permits. And this is separate from the zoning act I wear. This is strictly for code compliance. Any building less than 35,000 cubic feet, commercial building...
Can you speak up louder into the microphone, please?
Can you hear me now?
Like, I'd hold it closer. She can't hear. Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Any building less than 35,000 cubic feet, commercial license, an unrestricted licensed construction supervisor could oversee, which is roughly the size of a McDonald's or a Burger King, just because it's cubic feet, not square feet. Anything over, such as the fire station that we're talking about, would be under construction control where the architects and the engineers are responsible for doing the onsite inspections and providing construction control reports to the code official. The code official at any and all time has the right to go onto that site during an active building permit to do inspections. We've done many a projects, many a school buildings, and I think the process that the state has outlined works very well. And the city or town cannot regulate that, nor can a city council regulate the building code. They have no authority to. I mean, that's strictly at the state, and I'll leave it at that.
And you also enforce the zoning in that area in terms of, again, height of structures and things like that as well?
I am the zoning administrator for all issues, including the oversight of special permits issued with the numerous conditions that are attached to special permits. And part of the job is deciphering those conditions to see what other department may have to provide additional assistance, such as mitigation with the city engineer or stormwater management with the city engineer, things like that. So, it's, it's a balance and act, Counselor Toil.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Tom. So, that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
In terms of my own opinion or thought, so, I like to go into every topic brought before us with an open mind, because at the end of the day, you know, my opinion, I guess, matters, but more importantly, those who elect us, you know, we're charged with being their voice in these matters. So, I go into every, every single petition with an open mind. You know, similar to some of the other councils that they've said today, you know, over the last 24 hours for me, I'd say I've received many of emails and phone calls and texts, most who aren't super thrilled of the potential of the municipal use exemption. I believe that this administration, again, similar to what other people have said, this administration has every, every thought of positive attention, intentions on the project and for the fire station. You know, I too want this built as quick as possible. You know, these, these fire stations are in horrible condition. I understand as a contractor myself, not necessarily builder, but a contractor, that the longer things take, you know, the possible increases come about, and that's also a cost that we as a city have to take the brunt and can potentially cost our taxpayers more money and potential tax increases and things like that. I also understand that people don't want this to pass on the other sense because the potential loss of right and their voice being heard and, you know, what is going to happen down the line. I believe, similar to Counselor DeMers, that this does warrant some more thought in committee. It's already in committee, I think, at this point. So, I think it warrants some more thought. I'd love to hear from some of the residents. I think we're going to do that today. I'd like to kind of hash this out a little bit more in committee. Again, it's already in there. I haven't made my decision one way or the next, but, you know, I've heard the concerns substantially by those within the city. You know, as, as, as somebody that represents the whole city, not just one ward, I've heard a lot of concerns, you know. But I do think this type of situation... a lot of concerns, you know, but I do think this type of situation does warrant a little bit more discussion. I do, again, want this fire station, or these fire stations, to be built as quick as possible, but I also want to make sure that we are doing so and making sure that everybody within our city has a say, or at least feel as though they have a say in terms of how it's constructed, the aesthetics, things like that, and feel like their rights aren't being, you know, for lack of better words, violated. So I appreciate it. Again, I know your intentions are super positive and, you know, in the right place. I do believe we need to, we need to speak about this a little more and kind of talk about it more in committee.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor DeMambro.
Mayor Concanon, I listened to the December 10th planning board committee meeting, and the two things I got off of that, or got, they took away from, two reasons for doing the buy right for municipal buildings, streamline the process and cost. And I just feel that, especially up in North Woburn, I think our city is in a critical time with the density that we have. All of the industry, the residents, we've got ADUs coming down the pike, we've got the MBTA 3A. I think more now than ever, it is in the city's best interest and our residents' best interest that this body maintains control of special permits. I think the more that we bring into our city, and it's just going to continue to grow, it's just, it's the way it is. I think it's not a good idea to remove it, whether it for just municipal uses and, again, for a fire station. And I want to be clear, I am in full support of stations four and five. Absolutely. But I think there's a way that encompassing this body, as well as your, you know, the rest of your administration and department heads, that we can move that along, and it shouldn't drag, but with the option that our residents have a say. They can come and they voice their opinions, whether it's Doc Sky compliant lighting or a sign or whatever. They don't like the bush that, you know, and the renderings in the front of the building, but at least they have some sort of say. And I think that's a professional courtesy that the government has with the residents because, in the end, it's their tax dollars that are going to pay for all this. So they should have a say. And I think there's a way to go about this so that we can expedite on these critical petitions and projects that can still come through the city council and through the special permit process. I have heard from several of my constituents, I've received phone calls, emails, text messages, and I take those seriously, like we all do. So at this time, I'm not in support of this. When I looked at that, that planning board meeting, and I went over it a couple of times, and I watched it, and I rewound it and played it again, and I'm like, I'm only seeing two, two reasons here. And realistically, that glass didn't hold much water, because I believe that if we expedite the process and everybody's got their ducks lined up, and we push a fire station or whatever, whatever that municipal project is, we can channel it through our administration, your administration and this body, and we can pick up that ground so that it doesn't, you know, drag on and the costs go up. So that's where I'm at as of now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. Councilor Mercer-Brewan.
I didn't know if there were, I'm sorry, if there were other councillors?
It's you and then Councilor DeMers.
Okay, thank you, President Dillon. So just a couple of quick comments. First of all, Mayor Concanon, I know you have the interest of the city at heart, and you know I can be very passionate, and I think that's what the planning director called me. That's a conversation for another day, but I care deeply about this city, as you do. And I truly believe, and wouldn't be sitting here saying to you, that I truly believe we are removing rights from our citizens, rights that they deserve. And I know you said, proceed with the project as uneventfully as possible, remove potential obstacles. The residents of this city are not obstacles. They are the, they paid for these buildings. They have a right to stand up at that podium and give their input and have it be part of the permanent record forever, and if there are conditions, that we put those conditions on there and protect them with their contract. So I too want to see the fire, fire station built, of course, of course. But at the end of the day, we can't take people's rights to do it. So my question to you, Mayor Concanon, is if you had to file the special permit tomorrow, you're ready, right? Everything's ready to go, right?
We will be.
Okay, perfect, great. And then, you know, there's the matter of, of course, the one in East Woburn, we know where it is, it's in the middle of a neighborhood. Some of the people over there didn't even know they were starting when we first started. The West Side project, we don't even know where that's going to be. So there could be some people who live next to municipal property or don't live next to municipal property that haven't even had a chance to weigh in on something like this. At the end of the day, we could all end up living next to municipal property, you just don't know. So again, I'm sure you have great intentions, but I think they are not really serving the public the way they need to in terms of their rights. And in terms of the budget, if we're ready to go, we shouldn't have issues with that. If things are going to go up, they're going to go up whether or not you expedite this through or not. So, and I want to just remind everybody, the public hearing process, the abutters must be notified by this city. How many people in your wards knew that we were even considering this? How many until 24 hours ago? None, very few. And I know it was on the planning board, but people, at the end of the day, they don't have every minute of the day to be paying attention to, they have lives. It's our responsibility to make sure that message gets out, and part of the public hearing process, that happens. The abutters who live in that area will get notices, and we, our voices, can be their voices. So, again, thank you, Mayor, for coming down. If the council wants to take it to committee, I am not going to change my mind on this. I feel so deeply concerned that we are removing people's rights that I cannot support it. I think I told you that a couple of months ago. But if that's what the council wants to do, I think that's fine. It will give us more time to spread the word about what's happening and have more people reach out about their concerns. Or not, maybe they won't have concerns, but they should, they absolutely should. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor DeMers.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing, too, is, you know, as many of you know, my colleagues, I'm big on process. I really respect the process because the process almost matters more than some of the issues that we have. Because if the process isn't done properly, then we didn't get to a decision properly, in my opinion. So I think any matter that we have come before this committee should have something come out of committee, whether it's a report to adopt or ought to pass, or it's denying it. That document should be done because it tells the general public and the taxpayers that we've done our homework, whether we agree with that or not. And I think having that additional time, alerting the abutters to certain properties or letting folks know, getting it out there in the ethos so that more people can chime in, I don't think that hurts our process right now.
Agreed.
I think that's a beneficial process so we hear from all avenues, so that we, as the city councilors, can go to that committee hearing and probably have heard from more constituents that might have particular questions that either weren't asked tonight, couldn't be able to be answered tonight due to additional information being needed, and then we finally have a report of that committee to send it out. I haven't made up my mind tonight.
Yeah, I have.
But, well, that's okay, and we are fully entitled to do that. But I don't think sending it to committee means we're approving anything. I think it keeps it open for more discussion so that we know exactly what we're voting on when we come back on February 5th with the committee report.
Through the chair, I will support, I will support that this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else before we open the public comment?
Make a motion to open the public-
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll, please.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. Councilor Campbell.
Aye.
Councilor DeMers.
Aye.
Councilor DeMambro.
Aye.
Councilor Furulow.
Aye.
Councilor Mercer-Brewan.
Aye.
Councilor Papalatto.
Aye.
Councilor Toro.
Aye.
Councilor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Please state your name and address for the record into the microphone.
How are you tonight?
Fantastic. President Dillon, thank you. Ken Parley, Marion Street, North Woburn. We shouldn't be in a position where we're given rights to the government. I want to commend Mayor Concanon for his approach to try to steadfast this thing, but I think it's a moral thing, the process that needs to happen. You know, we have state mandated rights, that's kind of the counterweight of maybe what has gone on in this chamber. Things that maybe, you know, again, I appreciate the thought to move this thing forward. I know what happens when these projects get delayed, and the time, and the inflation, and the noise, right? We all want to beat that, but we should be working on giving residents more rights here and not the government. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? How are you tonight, sir?
Hi, how's it going?
Just please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Ian Chenich, I live on Mountain Street, the western part of Woburn. I do think that there are explicit reasons why a city in some circumstances would want to allow permitting as of right, specifically when it comes to housing. I know there's like many cities across the country that have limited housing to single family housing, there's been redlining, and so I know that there's been a state initiative to increase the amount of housing, and so I know that the governor has encouraged people, encouraged cities to adopt that in order to have permitting by right in residential areas. But I actually firmly disagree that there should be municipal permitting as of right. I know, I'm not saying that this would happen, but like you could build a city jail next to a residential area, you could build, you know, any kind of buildings that don't have as much public input, that would be very upsetting if you ended up on the wrong side of it. And while I think that there are specific things that you can zone for if you wanted to change the zoning rules in different parts of the city to allow for more efficiency in zoning, I don't agree that public buildings with tax money should be excluded from that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? How are you today, sir?
Michael Shere, 86 Mishwan Road. Thank you, councilors that received my email today and got back to me. I just had one question. How long does the special permit take to get this through for a building like this?
Clark Higgins, what's the approximate time, depending, it could go quick or depending how it goes through the process, correct? That's a tough one to answer.
You want me to go through the process right now?
Sure.
Okay. For special permit process, a special permit would be filed at the city clerk's office before the city council. At that time, it'll get on the next public, public meeting schedule, go before the city council. At that time, the city council would then refer it to a public hearing and to the planning board. Oh, no, not to the special permit, excuse me, refer it to a public hearing. At that time, once it's referred to a public hearing, we then send notices out to the newspaper and to the abutters of the properties. And what the, they have to hear that public hearing within 65 days of the filing of the petition. After that, essentially, it could be heard and passed in one night if it, essentially, if you did that. After that, the decision, we have two weeks to write the decision in the city clerk's office, it's then filed within two weeks in the city clerk's office. After the two weeks, or as soon as the decision is filed, notices then go out to abutters again about the decision with their appeals rights on it. People have 20 days to appeal that special permit decision. On the 21st day, if no appeals have been made in the courts and you have not been notified of it, we will then issue the special permit on the 21st day. At that point, it then goes to the petitioner, then takes it to, in this case, it'd be the city of Woburn, probably the city solicitor would take it to the registry of deeds or file it with the registry of deeds. At that point, they would get it recorded at the registry of deeds and a barcode put on the special permit decision. They then go to the building department with that special permit decision and barcode, and the building permit process starts with the building department.
It's a long process.
21 days?
Outstanding explanation, Clark Higgins.
I just want to say, I support the fire stations. I know, as my grandfather worked in these stations, my uncle did, my cousin does. I totally support the thing, but I also totally support that the right of the citizens go through the process the right way. You know, not one person should have power. It should, you know, we're paying for these, the citizens are paying for this, do it the right way, but also it needs to be done. So, you know, if it could go through a special permit and expediate it, great, you know, that's what I would fully support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Going once, here we go. How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Just state your name and address, please.
Can you just speak into the microphone, please?
Yep. So, Timothy Boss, 103 Mishwan Road. I had one statement and one question. So the statement, this is a general statement, which is that, you know, I'm a fan of having everyone aware of this, so my coworker who lives here actually let me know about this. I thought he was going to be here. But so like, you know, having due notice to like have residents understand like what's going on, I think is definitely important, you know, when government, at whatever level, you know, decides to do something. The question I had was, I think, to Mayor Concanon, which is, with respect to this, and I kind of gauged it when I was listening, we're talking about municipal property, you know, I mean, I understand right now it's fire stations, but like, what would this be with respect to like the concept of eminent domain? Like, is this just like government property that, you know, that the city already has, that they're just deciding to put a fire station on it? Or is this talking about like, let's say, you know, you have five houses and you really need a fire station, you know, like, because you don't have enough coverage currently, and so you're going to put it, you're like where those five houses are, right? Like, is that, I guess, that's the question I have, just to understand what, yeah, what does it look like?
Sure. Eddie?
Sure. Mayor Concanon.
Sure, I can answer that. What we're talking about is a zoning code change for municipal uses. So the topic of eminent domain is totally unrelated to this discussion. All of the authority and power of government under the doctrine of eminent domain exists off to the side. That's not what this is about. We're really talking about when government, when the city of Woburn government needs to build a facility for municipal use, traditionally a fire station, police station, school, DPW water treatment plant, a municipal use. As I said, we carve out a couple of exceptions already in our zoning code for schools, essential public uses like utilities, and interestingly enough, roof mounted solar panels are allowed by right without a special permit in all zones. So we have taken steps to amend our zoning code as needed, and as I said in the beginning of all of this, this was simply an attempt to bring forward a discussion on ways we could move the process along to get fire stations built. I would be totally comfortable with the council making this as narrow as they felt comfortable, and if that was as a result of public input and people weighing in on how much, you know, how broad that exemption or how narrow that exemption would need to be, again, totally fine with that. And to the other point asked earlier, if we go through the special permit process, no one on this side of the podium here is trying to make it sound like it's arduous or impossible or puts everything in peril. If for a moment I created that impression either here or at the planning board, forgive me, I do not believe I did. I think I've been pretty clear throughout the entire process that this was simply an opportunity to move things along, to see if there was interest from the two bodies in Woburn who weigh in on all things zoning, the planning board and the city council, to see if there was an appetite. If there's not an appetite and this body wants status quo, that's fine, we'll proceed. So I don't want there to be any hard feelings or feelings of, you know, we're engaged in battle here and somebody needs to win, we're all on the same side. We're all on the same side, we all want to see fire stations built, we'd like to see them built as quick as possible, on time, under budget, uneventful in terms of disruptions or supply chain disruptions or dramatic increases in steel or things that we've experienced over the past few years. I'm not sure what the average time is for a special permit here in Woburn. I don't think it's, you know, 35 to 45 days. It's probably a few months for things to go through the process, and we've seen just a couple of special permit applications tonight that I feel like I had dark hair when we started this process. So the average for a special permit, let's be, you know, upfront about that, it can take some time, and what we're really trying to do is not lose that time. All this is. I can live with respect and honor whatever decision this good body comes up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion to, oh, what's our?
Sorry.
There you go, someone.
I just, oh.
How are you tonight, sir?
Pretty good. You thought you were over, but no.
Just your name and address for the record.
John Heslin, 36 Clinton Street.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I don't think there's anything nefarious going on here. This, to me, this has nothing to do with Mayor Concanon, the current city council, or any of the boards or the people who meet on those boards. I don't have an issue with that, but this is a fundamental issue to me, and I think Councillor Campbell spoke on it. And for me, it's about the rights of the residents, and frankly, I didn't vote for any of you to surrender your rights, because your rights are my rights. We're letting you take care of them, we entrust you with our rights for two years at a time. So that's it to me. This is, and it's a fundamental issue for me. I don't care what the reason is for wanting to remove the special permit necessity, I don't care the reason. I want those fire stations to be built. I live on Clinton Street, where engine three, I grew up with the fire station there. I'd get on the phone and people going, what is going on in your neighborhood? I said, no, no, nothing. I don't even hear it. I don't hear it now because it's moved down the street. But, so this isn't about the, that topic. This, to me, is about the rights of the citizens and frankly, a city council that doesn't have a lot of rights as it is, you know, I don't want you giving up what few rights you have, because those are our rights as well. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one.
President Dillon.
Yes.
May I?
Councillor Boone.
Thank you. I know you've all put up with me tonight, so thank you for that. I just wanted to make a quick comment about the length of special permits, right? Because there were some on our agenda tonight that have been around a long time. But as somebody who also has been around a long time, usually when the special permits take a long time, it has nothing to do with this body. It has to do with the lawyers that are standing at that podium that don't bring us what we've asked to be brought. I can't remember us having anything to do with municipal uses where that was the case, right? Because we have all the people in place who know exactly what needs to be done. So it is absolutely possible we can get it done within the required time, not that it's about that, but I just want to make sure people understand that's not the norm when it, for municipal uses at all.
Thank you, Congress.
Thank you, President Dillon.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until February 4th.
Second.
And send it to committee.
Yes, Councillor Campbell. Councillor Campbell, you head the floor.
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody in what I've heard tonight, but I am going to vote against this going to committee because it does seem like it's going that way. Because this is very important, as I would like to thank the man who just spoke, and we should not be giving up our rights, period, not even a little. So for me, there's no reason for this to go to committee. I believe we've had it for many weeks now. We do know what it's about, and I, and especially, why not vote against it tonight, put that aside, and get the petition started tomorrow? And that way, we're not losing two weeks on the petition. But that's my view, and I just want to let you know, that's why I will be voting against this going to committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell. Anyone else?
If I may clarify?
Yes, Councillor.
This matter is already in committee. We're not sending it to committee, we're continuing the public hearing until February 4th.
I see, but yes, but thank you for that clarification. I still don't think that, at this point, that we need to take that route. That's my opinion. Thank you, because we're just adding more weeks onto this whole process, when in my view, it's quite clear from the emails that many aldermen have received, this is not the way that the residents or in our wards want to go. So why keep it going for a couple more weeks just to vote it down? I say that we take the vote and just, let's put it aside and move forward and then put the petition in tomorrow or whatever, whenever the mayor might have it ready. That way, we're not losing any time at all. But once again, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Clerk Higgins, I'll second Councillor Demers' motion.
And on the motion?
Yes, Councillor.
I just want to say, I know I said earlier that I would consider supporting Sunday to committee, but I will not do that. Councillor Campbell made a very compelling argument. I mean, one of the reasons for this whole, you know, process was to make sure we get this thing done timely. Why waste another minute?
Thank you.
So I won't support it.
Councillor Demers, would you just repeat that motion, please?
The motion was to continue the public hearing to February 4th.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll, please.
There's a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to February 4th. Councillor Campbell.
Opposed.
Councillor Demers.
Aye.
Councillor Demambro.
Aye.
Councillor Farullo.
Aye.
Councillor Marsha Bruin.
Opposed.
Councillor Papalatto.
Opposed.
Councillor Toro.
Aye.
Councillor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye. So that passes.
President Dillon?
Next item.
I'm sorry. So the public understands that there's a special permit, or there's a committee meeting next week?
Meeting, meeting.
And also that there are no public notices that go out, so everybody at home, there will be no public notices about that.
Public notice of the meeting.
There'll be a public notice about the meeting, but there are no notices that go to the residents. Just want to make sure people understand that. So they need to keep an eye on the website, and I would imagine all of us as city councilors will make sure that they know that the public, that the ordinance committee will be happening.
And it's a great segue into, this is a good time to talk about the Woburn page. Anyone can go on it, very easy to find, go on the internet, punch in Woburn, it punches right up, and all you do is go to events or calendars, and all the events, all the public meetings, different charitable meetings are even on there, some of the ones that the city has for social events as well. So to be informed is the best way to take care of yourself and stay in the process. So that's my two cents on that. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Gustafino Realty LLC for a proposed zoning amendment to add a new section of the Woburn zoning ordinance to include the Central Square Overlay District as well as proposed amendment to the zoning map, making 13 posses of land. That's the one in plan entitled Overlay District Zoning.
Madam Clerk, we're out of order. Madison Holdings is in.
Oh, excuse me.
Madison.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, excuse me, I jumped ahead, is the Woburn Madison Holdings LLC for a proposed zoning amendment for the Woburn zoning ordinance regarding section two definitions of mixed-use hotel/restaurant as well as section six and section 6.1 regarding the Woburn landing. There is a communication, excuse me, a communication dated January 15, 2025, was received from Attorney Joseph Tavi, requesting a continuance to the February meeting and asking to meet in committee on July, I mean, on January 27th.
Councillor Tavi, how are you?
Motion to accept McPhee's permit record.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll, please.
Motion and a second to accept the communication. Councillor Campbell.
Aye.
Councillor Demers.
Aye.
Councillor Demambro.
Aye.
Councillor Farullo.
Aye.
Councillor Marsha Bruin.
Aye.
Councillor Papalatto.
Aye.
Councillor Toro.
Aye.
Councillor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
Motion passes.
How are you, Attorney Tavi?
Fine, thank you. Attorney Joseph Tavi, Reuben and Redman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn. I think the letter speaks for itself, we've requested a continuance of the public hearing. I spoke to the chair of the ordinance committee, Mr. Demers, and that we're going to be scheduled for Monday before the committee.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
I just would like to thank the petitioner for their patience on holding off and then moving this to committee on Monday and a hearing on the 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd also, attorney, I know that this has been around for a while, so I also wanted to thank you and your client for your patience. I still have concerns about this and have someone assisting me to understand what the real, I mean, I know you can't, that's not your job, you work for your client, but I do have some concerns about the ramifications of making this change, and I can't, I can't move it forward unless I understand those, but I'm getting closer to understanding what they potentially could be. So we will see you Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second, roll, please.
Vote to open the public hearing. Councillor Campbell.
Aye.
Councillor Demers.
Aye.
Councillor Demambro.
Aye.
Councillor Farullo.
Aye.
Councillor Marsha Bruin.
Aye.
Councillor Papalatto.
Aye.
Councillor Toro.
Aye.
Councillor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the council on February 4th.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll, please.
Motion and a second to continue the public hearing to February 4th. Councillor Campbell.
Aye.
Councillor Demers.
Aye.
Councillor Demambro.
Aye.
Councillor Farullo.
Aye.
Councillor Marsha Bruin.
Aye.
Councillor Papalatto.
Aye.
Councillor Toro.
Aye.
Councillor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
And now the next item, Gustafino Realty LLC for proposed zoning amendment to add a new section of the Woburn zoning ordinance to include Central Square Overlay District as well as zoning map amendment to make 13 posses of land subject to the Central Square Overlay District. A communication dated January 15, 2025, was received from the planning board, there's also a PowerPoint presentation that is before you as well.
Make a motion that communications be received, made part of the permit record.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll, please.
To accept the communications. Councillor Campbell.
Aye.
Councillor Demers.
Aye.
Councillor Demambro.
Aye.
Councillor Farullo.
Aye.
Councillor Marsha Bruin.
Aye.
Councillor Papalatto.
Aye.
Councillor Toro.
Aye.
Councillor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye.
You just give me, you need this, right?
Ah, yes.
Councillor Tavi, how are you again?
Yes, for the record, Attorney Joseph Tavi, Reuben and Redman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, here on behalf of the applicant, Gustafino Realty LLC. With me this evening, if you could raise your hand as I announce your name, is John Tarchi of Gustafino Realty, Peter Carbone of Foxfield, Nick Delacava of Allen &amp; Major, site engineer, and Scott Thornton of Anasen Associates, who's the traffic engineer. So this evening, we're going to make a presentation in which I'm going to give you an overview of the zoning amendment. Mr. Tarchi will follow me, give you history of the property, and then Peter Carbone will give you an overview of the development that we would propose if the zoning ordinances are adopted. Just in terms of location and context, the area in green is the area of the proposed zoning district. To the right are a couple of the buildings along Main Street, and then on the bottom right is the Tarchi corporate headquarters. So this evening, although there's only a zoning amendment before you, we will get into the proposed development, and as you know, this is the first step in the rezoning process. The rezoning process requires public hearing before the planning board, public hearing before the city council. City council must wait for the planning board to make its recommendation before it can take its final vote on the zoning amendment. If the city council approves the zoning amendment, then the petitioner will need to require, will be required to file a special permit petition. During the special permit process, there'll be peer review, committee meetings, public hearings, plenty of opportunity for public input. So the planning board held its initial public hearing last Tuesday, and they continued its hearing to February 11th. So in terms of the proposed zoning amendment, we've been working on this proposed amendment for the past year. We've obtained input from city officials, from abutters, from people in the community, and what we've filed is a new proposed section 35 entitled Central Square Overlay District. So the purpose of the district is to promote, as you can see on the screen, the health, safety, and general welfare of the community by encouraging the redevelopment of the Central Square area, to also ensure high-quality site planning, architect, and landscape design, provide diversified housing, and to encourage adoption of energy-efficient building practices and sustainable construction methods. So this, the zoning district contains approximately 13 properties as outlined on the zoning map that was filed with the zoning map petition. All of these properties are proposed to be included within the zoning district. So we did provide you with a full copy of the proposed amendment. This evening, I'd just like to touch upon those uses that are proposed in the Overlay District. The Overlay District consists of property that's both in the residential zone and in the S1 zone. So the uses proposed are general office, there's already office space on the property under 25,000 square feet, medical, dental, under 20,000 square feet, light manufacturing under 20,000 square feet, research and testing under 20,000 square feet, retail under 10,000 square feet, and accessory uses in connection with those primary uses. In terms of the dimensional requirements, the district must contain five acres setback along Main Street 10 feet, and you'll see that when Peter gives you an overview of the proposal. Minimum front yard setback is 15 feet, side yard 25 feet, rear yard 25 feet. Maximum building coverage on the five acres is 40%, and 25% must be landscape open space. The maximum number of residential units that would be allowed within the district are 225. Minimum parking spots, 1.5 per unit, and parking for non-residential uses would be two spaces per 1,000 square feet, with a maximum building height at Main Street at 39 feet and three floors, and the maximum building height with the buildings that would be behind the Main Street. be behind the Main Street buildings would be 65 feet, five floors. And Peter will get into that in terms of the topography when he makes his presentation. So the overlay also requires that the Wetlands Protection Act and ordinance remains effective, the mitigation requirements under Section 18 remain effective, floodway requirements under Section 9 remain effective, affordability requirements under Section 11.11 requiring 15% of the units to be affordable, and then also the stretch energy code. The ordinance is a little more detailed than what we've just presented, but those are the primary uses that would be allowed under the zoning ordinance. So at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to John Tarchi, who'll take you through the history of the Gustafino Building and his vision for this property. Okay, John.
Thank you, Attorney Tarby. Good evening, Mr. President.
How are you, Mr. Tarchi?
I am well, thank you very much. Good evening, Counselors. Thank you for your service. As I sat here on an eighteen-degree night, I'm sure everybody would like to be someplace else by a, by a fire, and you're serving our city, so thank you for that. I was struck with that tonight as I was going out the door and said, "Do I really want to go?" And I think about you guys and gals, so. Just a word of intro about me, I'm John Tarchi. We've officeed here for 26 years at 660 Main Street, and before that, we built a building at 130 New Boston Street. Obon Penn was in it, and that's where we officeed for the first 10 years of our 35 years of residency here in the city. Our company goes back to 1920, so we're actually, actually 1922, to be exact. My grandfather started the firm, and so we're 102 years, two and a half years this year. Sometimes I feel that old myself. This building goes back to 1907, and it is a very special building up in the, I don't know if this is working. Pavel, I guess it's, upper left-hand corner is the original building. Those are some of the workers in it. It was owned by Rafael Guastavino and his son Rafael Guastavino Jr. They were from New York, and we still don't understand why they moved to Woburn. But it was very interesting, the first president of their company was William F. Blodgett, who was the mayor of Woburn. Interesting private-public partnership that they had back then. They are a notable company. Rafael Guastavino came from Spain in 1880. He holds patents, 24 patents, and taught and studied at MIT. Has patents on Catalan vaulted arches that are really quite amazing. He brought this technology from Spain here that were very low arches. You can see it in the middle on the bottom. That's just one of 1,100 buildings that they built or contributed to the construction of and the design of and the fabrication of the tile for. Included several cathedrals, dozens of churches, including the National Cathedral in Washington, DC, where President Carter's funeral was. That whole dome was built by the company that officeed here in our city. It's pretty amazing, when I discovered this building, I felt like I discovered something, looking down a narrow passageway off of Wyman Street, and what I saw was what you see in the lower right corner, was that, a glimpse of an old building that was completely covered with ivy, which turned out to be completely ant-infested, that had 12 different tenants in it, including Martin's TV, where several of us got our TVs when we, when they used to have old tubes, and you had to have two people load them into the back of a station wagon to get them to. And that was one of the few places that actually could repair them. There was a dance studio upstairs, there was a small engine repair shop, there was an inventor downstairs. It was an amazing eclectic place, but it was in great disrepair. They had added on to the building from the historic building, and the upper right corner, you'll see some, some add-ons that they made. And when we went about the work to restore the building, because we fell in love with it, we didn't know what the history was when we bought the property. We actually bought the property from the Carbone family. Peter is our partner in this project, and they had owned it for several years before us. And we were fortunate to buy it, and then as we started to excavate and reveal and restore, we found evidences of some of this tile work, all concealed. Brewer's Bagels corporate headquarters used to be in the arch, sitting in the middle of the building. Very unusual. Let's see if I can. So we went about the work of restoring it and uncovering the buried work. As you walk in the front door, upper left-hand corner, if you look straight up, that's one of the arches. The arches that they made could span up to 200 feet without any columns in the middle of them. It was an amazing technology that they, they made this thin tile, this terracotta tile, and they would layer that tile, sometimes it would go eight layers thick, herringbone with cross, crosshatching, and it would span enormous spans and load and bear incredible loads. I could go on for hours about it, but I'll just cut to the chase. So we peeled off a lot of the added-on work and got it back to the original state. As you come through the front door, if anybody, how many of you have been there? That's great. If you come through the front door, Guastavino signs his name in most of his projects in tile, in pieces of tile, and that's what you see on the upper there. So we restored that. People come from all over the country to see the building because they have connected with his technology. In the country, there is a resurgence of appreciation for classical architecture. We've gone way out with post-modernism and all kinds of weird stuff, and people are coming back to classical architecture, and they're using Guastavino's tile and methodology of these vaulted arches all across the country now, starting to show up. It's really a special place that we would like to restore beyond just for our own use, we would like to build a community around it. And that's really what we want to do. When I bought this property, when my wife and I bought this property in 1999, we knew it was special, and as various houses came up for sale on Main Street, as we could, we bought those houses. So 20 years ago, we started buying houses, and now we just bought the fire station. So we'll show you what our vision is for revitalizing Central Square, because we think Central Square is a special place, is a gateway into the city, and, and bordering so many nice neighborhoods, so. In, in July, I'll just skip down, I'm taking too long, they're going to get a hook out. Up in the left-hand corner, we invited in July about 500 area residents to come to a meeting that we conducted at, at the property. About, close to 80 people showed up, and we had a great meeting, lasted about an hour and a half long, and a lot of good questions, a lot of good engagement with the community, and actually a lot of support, because you'll see the things that we're trying to do to make it a win-win for, for everybody. So out of that meeting came some passion about Hart Street and the flooding situations along Hart Street. And so we commissioned a study by Allen &amp; Major, who is our engineer, and they walked the entire stream beds in the Cummings Brook Basin, and we think we have a solution. I don't think it's high-tech, I think it's pretty straightforward, and we'd be glad to talk to you about that and, and talk to the residents about that. And then in December, like I said, we purchased the fire station, which is key to fixing the intersection. We'll talk about the improvements to both intersections that we would like to make if you approve our plans. So thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Peter Carbone.
Hi, everyone. For the record, Peter Carbone, also a real estate attorney, but a resident, lifelong resident of the city, the elements to the Kennedy. I think many of you, I know a lot of you personally and whatnot, it's good to be back before the council, it's been a number of years, I think, since I've, since I've been in front of you all. But John asked me to get involved with this probably two years ago, and I thought it would be very exciting to take a look at this property, especially being a Boys Club kid, Central Square kid. I think we would all agree, Central Square's probably can use a little bit of love and attention. How we all get there, we'll, you know, we will see. Before you tonight is the, is the zoning ordinance, but if I were in your shoes, I'd really want to know what the project is before I'm going to vote on it, on a zoning ordinance or an overlay, to see what we're gonna, what's, what can come with this and so forth. So tonight, we're going to give you a brief glimpse into the project. There's going to be a lot of other discussion, a lot of other input, public hours, et cetera. John touched a little bit on some, some of the issues, drainage, traffic, all those things. I'll touch on some of them, take some questions, whatever, and I'm sure we're going to talk a lot about in, in some committee meetings, et cetera. This is a copy of the master plan, so I think you all have a packet right in front of you that has this in it. So the project, just from an orientation standpoint, I'm sure you all know, you know, where this is, Main Street to the bottom, the Boys and Girls Club to the left, Canal up to the top. John mentioned he was the winning bidder on the fire station, which is going to be a tremendous help to the project as well as to the overall traffic that's in the area by being able to straighten out at least that intersection. So we're, we're thrilled with that. It's, it's not going to be cheap, but I think for this project and the, and what we're planning, it's really a needed, a needed change improvement to the area. It will also help provide access into the Boys and Girls Club. Some of you may know, I helped chair the committee to build the new club years ago, which was great, and with all your help, thank you. Getting them out to a signalized intersection to go left out onto Main Street, as many people come out onto the, to the club and try to take a left, it can take a little while. This should help alleviate that. Don't know yet what's going to happen with the current club access drive, so I'm sure you all want to know or ask. Don't know yet. It's probably going to be up to you all, us, the public, to figure out, is it a right-in, right-out? Is it an emergency? What is it? We'll get there, we'll figure out what that's going to be. We have a great relationship with the Boys Club and so forth and, and whatnot. The couple of just other issues to point out on this, the access, there's only pedestrian access right now at the top. If I hit, if the late, I don't think this is going to work on that screen. Yeah, doesn't. So there's an access, there's a pedestrian access up on the top part, up closest to, I believe, John, Karen, a lot of you know where John lives, kind of right on the other side. That access is not intended to be opened up as any kind of vehicular access into the site. If fire or police decided that they really wanted it as an emergency, then certainly we're willing to have that conversation, but we're not necessarily proposing that into the site. So the site would have one primary access in. You could get a secondary emergency in through the Boys Club if we needed, you know, if that one, if that first one got blocked in any way. The site itself is a little over six acres when you take into account all 13, I think it's 13, as Joe mentioned, parcels altogether. There's a couple of parcels to the top that are in gray up there that are in the zoning area but not proposed for the product, so those are intended to stay. They're very nice houses, the McLaughlin family owns one of them, one of the Tarchi family members owns the other one, they're going to stay. One of the other things maybe to point out, just in this, we're going to talk a lot more about on one of my other slides. After input from some of you, some of the meetings with the public, Mr. Karen and others, everybody felt that it would be best to close off Lowell Street or that portion of it, that we've all probably driven from Burlington, driven down Wyman Street, Lowell Street, got to the end and taken that right, crooned your neck back to try to see the traffic. Everyone seemed to think it was a good idea, is a good idea to close it off. I'm not suggesting that it's a done issue, I want your input, you know, on it, we should talk about it, and we'll talk about what it means in terms of beautification for the park and so forth, but you can see that on this plan where it's not land to be given to us, the developer, by any stretch, it's going to be a public amenity for the residents and people of, of Central Square. The project, Joe went over some of the zoning stuff, I'm not really going to delve too much into all that. This will meet all the zoning requirements, things in terms of parking and open space, lot coverage, you know, all of that. The project is really, two projects I consider it in one, it's really the beautification and what we want to do out on Main Street right now, and I'll give credit to John Karen for this. John, initially, we were thinking about a larger building up on the street, and John said, "You know," he said, "I'm not opposed to the housing, we need more housing, but Main Street right now has some broken teeth." And that was his quote. "Let's fix the broken teeth on Main Street and beautify that rather than just taking it out and turning the whole thing into what might look like one larger building up on the street." We had our planners look at it, good idea, let's, we think that's the right thing to do, is to not change the character of the street in that regard by placing a building right up front. So, and I'm going to, we'll delve into that a little bit more. The buildings in the back, A and B, which flank, so again, John's building does not get touched, it stays there. I worked on it myself in junior high, trying to get all that other stuff out of there. Building was, you couldn't even see the building, my dad purchased it, I want to say, in 79 or 80, spent my high school years cleaning it out. Buildings A and B will be five-story buildings, proposed to be five stories, about 188 units. And that's really around the net new units we'll talk about, because we want to talk about what's in the back and then kind of what's in the front. So figure five stories, they're about, one's about 93 units, the other is about 95. There's parking under building A, there's surface parking for the rest, meeting the 1.5 requirements. We've done many residential analyses on what the right parking ratio is, and we can get into that today or as we get into the special permit, you know, down the road. But more than sufficient parking. The townhouses actually out front will have parking, will have garages under, so there'll be two spaces for each one within the garage, so there'll be direct parking within those. And there's also a lot of driveways currently up on Main Street that exist, that some of those will be closed off, improving, helping to improve some of the traffic in those areas. Buildings, we have a great architectural firm. The one thing I'm going to apologize in advance is I don't have a lot of renderings to show you of the bigger buildings today, but we will at our next meeting, and we want to make sure they're right and architecturally exactly what we want to show. They're going to take into account all the things at the Guastavino building and pull those elements into the design of the, of the, of the buildings, all the buildings, not just those two, but also the, the townhouses out front. I'm going to scroll forward for a sec. So we talked about this being really almost two different projects. So this is, this is what looks like out front today. So that's the front cropped of what we're, what we have. From the fire station, which is actually the second building in on the left, over to the edge of where this picture's cropped, there's 10 or 11 structures in there, there's 17, 20 units that we know of. We think there may be more, but let's just say there's 20 units in there right now. There's probably a few more apartment renters in there, but let's call it 20. We all know what it looks like, there's some imagery that we have that we'll show, but we all know what it looks like. The one, the buildings on the bottom, the townhouses, eight units per building, four of the buildings. So you go from 10 structures, call it 10 structures and 20 units, plus or minus, to four with as many as 32, about eight in each building is what, is what those are, is what those have in them. That's, comes some imagery of what they look like today. That's your view up Main Street if you were heading towards downtown. I'm going to scroll through these rather quick because it's been a long night and so forth. So here's some imagery of what it can look like and what is proposed. We're going to talk a bit about the park on the right, which is getting, a lot of the old mature trees are going to stay, so a lot of that, there won't be changes to, but there'll be ways to upgrade it and so forth. As you can see, we have a great landscape architect, Copley Wolf, working on this, and they'll be coming to one of the presentations down the road. they'll be coming to one of the presentations down the road. The buildings here, the townhouses, three stories from bottom to top. From the back, there would be another story for the parking under, but you can't see those. The topography of this site is almost, it's about 20 feet of elevation difference from the far side of the site all the way down as you get down and around the backside of the site. So, it's dropping down a lot as you come down the street. The elevation from coming out of the center, fire station obviously on your left, looking north, and this would be a glimpse into what it would look like in that same rendering, basically that same shot. You can get a glimpse of here Clinton Street starting to line up directly with the new access drive going across the street. Just of note, like the windows even in the building, and this isn't fully designed yet, this is, this is our, no, I would say first pass. We've done many passes, but the windows, if you take a look at even the top arch windows, how they resonate with some of the Guastavino buildings and so forth. Then we're still working on materials and so forth, which we'll present again down the road. I think this rendering is a little off in terms of the location of the building as it relates to Main Street. I believe we have a 10-foot setback, and this doesn't, to me, quite render it exactly. So, they took a little bit of liberty. These buildings would actually be moved back a little bit with maybe either a grass strip or some additional landscaping in the front of them. So, don't get too hung up on this in terms of its proximity to Main Street, but this is basically the view that you have from the Clinton-Main Street intersection looking towards the north. From a scale, from a sizing standpoint, again, the buildings that we're proposing, I guess, I guess, start in the lower right, normally go the other way, but, you know, 35 feet to the peak. And that peak, the peak really incorporates the third floor, you know, on these units. Those units are intended to be, likely to be a two-story townhouse with then a flat unit above. So, picture like a one-bedroom or maybe one and a half, maybe even two-bedroom, flat unit, 1,200 square feet on the upper floor. We're still wrestling with whether it ends up at the top floor or the lower floor so you don't have quite as many stairs, but the other unit would be a two-story townhouse style unit with, again, with parking under for both units. So, you'd have, again, parking under, two floors, townhouse, and then maybe another level. We're still trying to figure that out from a market standpoint, if that's the right way to go, and then we may flip those, but that's, that's kind of for down, a little bit down the road. But again, from a height standpoint, the structures that are there, you can see, these all measure roughly 30 feet, and the one coming out just directly across from the fire station's about 33 feet. And that would likely be higher than anything we have just because of the elevation. That's at the highest point on the site or on the, in the area, the one on the, the lower, the picture on the lower left that says 33 feet. The Wyman School measures about 55 feet in height, and again, you're up, the bottom, the finished floor elevation of that school is probably close to 20 feet over where we're going to be on our finished floor. So, 55 feet up high there, I mean, we're going to be considerably lower than that height as you look down Main Street as it compares to that. Even the, even the buildings behind, which are proposed to be five stories and 65 feet, you're down anywhere from 10 to 20 feet as you come off Main Street, and then you head down into the, into the site. So, you really, you, I will not say you will not see the buildings from back. One of them is going to be very hard to see. The other one, you will catch glimpses of it maybe as you pass by and look through different areas. But the architecturals, when we get them in a couple of weeks, will do a good job of really showing the scale of the buildings and how it fits into the, into the neighborhood. Talk about some of the benefits of the, of the project. So, walkability, connectivity will be greatly enhanced with a number of walkways through the site. Everyone, well, not everyone. The Herald Wyman School was open two years ago, maybe now, three years ago, somewhere in that range. Every day, there's probably 20, 30 kids that walk from the school to the Boys and Girls Club. Half the time, they're running right through the parking lot, which is totally fine with the Tachys, but we want to make it safe and convenient for them in terms of how they do it. And this actually opens up also the pedestrian walkways from not only the Guastavino site, but through the park over to the retail that is across the street, over by the, over by the old Wyman, over by the old Wyman School. So, one of the benefits as well is connecting to the canal, which, the canal, the bed of the canal, which eventually will be upgraded as a, as a, as a part of the walking trails in the city. The green, so, this is the vision for the green is, the black line is the, is the limit of Lowell Street. And again, this is not like we're saying this has to be done. We're saying, we think this is a good idea. The residents seem to think it's a good idea, but it's open for, certainly for conversation. If we do close it off, it will definitely expand. The park right now is about 15,000 square feet, and we estimate it goes to about 25,000 square feet. So, the limits of what the park would be, Wyman Green, so-called. It would also help, you know, as I mentioned on the other slide, get you to and from across Main Street, better dedicated areas, ability to add art, sculpture, you know, different things. John's even talked about maybe pulling some of the Guastavino elements and doing something, you know, in remembrance of them out on the, out on the park. So, some things like that. We then get into some of the traffic-related things. And Scott Thornton from Vanessan Associates is here today. Scott has done, I would say, a draft traffic study for the area, like as we will have to do under the special permit process, and we'll be prepared to hand that into the, to the council for review and consultants and Mr. Cashel and so forth as soon as the end of the week, early next week. But he's, in meeting with Jay Corey early on in the project, decided which intersections to look at. So, he studied a number of the area-wide intersections and, and traffic. One thing before I get into the intersections, just try to keep in mind, too, that Place Lane, which is only right down the street, is somewhere between 152 and 160 units. I keep seeing different index cards on how many units it is, but it's in that range. We'd be adding about a net new of about 188. So, they're not that much different. Go out there and take a look at your own and just see how much traffic is generated or not, you know, by Place Lane. I know it is a condo building. Scott can answer questions around the effects of condos versus apartments on traffic counts and so forth. He can also tell you that the traffic ITE numbers for places like Place Lane are running 40% lower than the ITE numbers based on actual visual counts that they've done as part of the project. So, again, that's all for them, for Scott, to talk to you about, whether it's today, you know, or down the road. Traffic is always going to be a key thing whenever we talk about a project like this. I live here, I'm a resident. We've seen, you know, everything that's come in the city, other residential projects, et cetera. The two biggest things that we would be working on traffic-wise for this, clearly with getting rid of the fire station and lining up Clinton Street, major change. Right now, you've got a two-tier structure for getting through that intersection. It's not great. I go through it four times a day. It's never been perfect. Even, even when you're coming out of the Tachy site, people don't notice stop at that first stop marker, if you will, and they'll still go through it as if they're coming up to the red light. So, it's just not perfect. I think we all know that. There's a better way to do it. This would, would better align it so that you can more clearly have a good intersection there. It also would give, and we'll show this through some of the imagery later on, great vistas into the site. So, you might actually be able to get glimpses of the Guastavino building today while you're sitting at that light, which you really don't see today. So, it should open that up. The other one, and there's actually some imagery here, some more detailed. So, the other intersection is really Eaton Ave and Main Street. I'm not sure everybody even knows it's called Wilcox Circle. To me, it's always been Lowell and Wyman Street, but it actually does have a name, Wilcox Circle. So, this drawing was done, I believe, either by Alan Imager with Scott's help or Scott Thornton, again, did it. This would basically show, if we're going to close off Lowell Street, it would show an expanding intersection or throat on Wilcox coming out onto Main Street with a dedicated right. And that right turn lane is probably going to get extended down all the way down to the, where the, where the green really starts. We've all come from Burlington up Wind Street and had traffic, you know, hit us there, and to get that dedicated right, I think is a very important element, not just for this project, probably as a, as an area-wide improvement for the city. This light also is a two-phase intersection or signalized intersection because the intersections don't line up today. If you come down Eaton Ave, you know you're looking sort of straight across at the, almost at the house across. This, as you look at the changes at the bottom, would better align it so you can have that one phase, single timing at the bottom of Eaton Ave. Don't believe it necessitates taking any private land. The green up there is all city land, which would require some easements by the city just to be able to make it better. Don't think it really touches Wyman, the school. The school's going to come up as a topic, maybe not for us, but just in the city. We all know that. What happens with it? I don't know. Don't think this does anything but make it better on that side of the street for eventually, whatever does happen, whatever does happen with the Wyman. But we don't, we don't really need any other private takings for any, for any of that work. So, that's that one. And this is the one, this is where Clinton, this isn't exactly perfect only because the rotary that we've got, that we've shown on the master plan, isn't on this plan, but it gives you the sense of how Clinton Street lines up with the new access drive into the site and then shows the access down into, into the Boys and Girls Club. So, those are the major traffic. We can get into, we can talk about anything you want in terms of levels of service and traffic counts and all that kind of stuff. We're prepared to talk to it tonight. It's getting late. We may have to talk about it as we get into some more discussions on the project. Finally, I'll just end with this. Fiscal impacts. We've done, I would say, probably two-thirds of a fiscal impact study at this point. We would be doing a full one as required under the zoning, under the special permit sectors of the ordinance. You're basically going to go from about 50, 51,000 in taxes up to tenfold. This does include excise tax of about, I think it's 90,000. So, real estate property taxes are around 450,000 that could be generated from this project based on what we proposed. That's not my number. That's based on the consultants that we have. Sure, it'll go through a peer review, just to give you an idea in a sense, that's about the increase. It's about $1 million, a little bit more than that in terms of fees that'll be generated from the project as part of building permit and other fees. So, that, I'm kind of going through this quick because it's been a little bit of a longer night. This is going to go through a lot more discussion. We're prepared to talk about, you know, anything and whatever you'd like. I know, just to reiterate, John touched on the drainage, just very quickly. This site probably, if not 100%, 90% of its sheet flows currently into the canal. Somehow, some way, the rain hits the ground, it infiltrates, it gets to the canal for the most part, most of it. Under the stormwater regs, we have to slow that down. We have to keep it on our site, detain it, retain it before it eventually goes off-site. Some of that water is still going to go into the canal, but it's going to go at a slower rate, and it should help, it will help improve the canal. The canal has other issues that are unrelated to just what's happening on the Tachy site, and we can get into it again at any, at any time. I think we have some ideas in terms of what needs to be done with the canal. I think even, this body may have even taken some action years ago to try to help that, and it seems like action was taken in a good way, but then things were, things had just sort of stalled. So, I think there's some things that, that we recognize that that is an area-wide issue, the drainage, and it's something that we're laser-focused on and will continue to work on that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to questions. Scott's here, like I said, Nick's here from Alan Imager, whatever, whatever we can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Counselor Boone?
I know we're going to get into all of it in committee. Nice to see you, by the way. It's been a while. Quick question on the parking. The people that rent and the people that buy, does anybody have to pay for that parking in order to have it?
Good question. I would say, if, let's just talk about rent versus buy first, because that question is, there's a little bit, two questions there. We haven't made the, you should assume that everything you see today is going to be for rent. We are looking into the likelihood of selling the townhouses out front. That would be our first goal, but they're going to have to economically work. We're still living in a little bit of a tough environment, interest rate-wise, construction costs. If we can sell them, we're going to sell them. And there's going to be the 15% affordable. I think Joe touched on that in his conversation, so sorry about that. So, just, just use that as a backdrop. With that, people right now are paying for parking in and around metro Boston, even if it's outside, not covered spaces. I don't know, we haven't decided yet on that. The spaces that are inside the garage, so there'll be spaces in the garage under one of the buildings. It's likely those will be, there'll be some cost for that. 50, 75, $100 a month. Don't know exactly. So, we haven't made a determination yet. The market is dictating that people are charging for it, but we haven't got that deep into it yet.
And again, I don't want to get into the details of your business or any of that, right? The only reason I ask that question, because if people have the option of not to pay for parking, I want to know where they're going to park, right? They can't be parking along Main Street or Central Street. So, that's why I ask.
Sure.
So, we'll need to get into that a little bit more. Not tonight, but.
Yeah, no, and I asked our, some of the residential consultants, we have worked on this as well. It's likely that every unit's going to have designated spots numbered. So, you will be, whether they pay for it or not, I need to figure that out, but everybody will likely have a spot, if not two spots, you know, in the development. It's a, it's 1.5 spaces per unit on average, which should lead to enough, between the ones and twos, that if people want to have two, they can have two.
And those will be questions really for when we get to the, if, when we get to the special permitting process. I know it's not part of the ordinance, but I wanted to ask it just so you can put it back in mind. And then also, you know, the elevation of the buildings, it's really hard to really know from these pictures. And I know you have some other pictures coming to us. I'd just like to really be able to see side by side with the existing and the new. And there is 3D technology. I don't think it costs any extra money to be able to show that. And I know you've met with many of the residents. That's amazing. There's a lot of hard work that's been done here, but for me, I would like to see that if it's possible.
Sure. Yeah, the, clearly with the stuff out front, it's relatively, I would say, easy, but we can, some of it is almost here now. We could overlay them. Out back, obviously, there isn't anything other than the Guastavino building today, but we can.
Which was so interesting. That was amazing. Thank you for the, Mr. Tachy, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Dillon.
You're welcome. Counselor Papalata.
Thank you. You guys did a great job putting this together. It looks great. There's a lot of positives to this for sure, but a couple of things that I'm, I had questions, and you might have this answered now, you might not. Has there been some kind of traffic impact that's going to affect this area that you should share at some point?
Would you say impact, Bill, in terms, in terms of, do we know the traffic counts and how we're going to mitigate that and all that?
By putting these units there, what's the effect going to be on the traffic?
We, we have it in it, so Scott, who's here, I'll give you my layman's terms and then Scott can address it, you know, as well. I'm not going to tell you there's not going to be any traffic. There's 200 units.
Usually, that's what we hear, so just.
No, I, I know that, and everybody says, ah, there's not, you know, there's not going to be any issues, any traffic in this net. The level of service of most of these intersections will be better when we're done with them than they are, not only today, but in the build as you look at it out six or seven years. So, his report, he looks out seven years to look at and see what are the build conditions, not only of this, other projects in the area. And what will the intersections look like if we do these, or if we don't? And if we don't even do some of these intersections, they get pretty bad over what they are now if we don't do anything. If we do, say, just these changes, you improve over where you are now, especially when, with the build condition even five years down the road. So, to answer your question, I, Scott, how many intersections did we look at, maybe? Maybe?
Six or seven.
Six or seven? And I'm sure this will be peer reviewed, and we'll look at each one of those with a peer review consultant. And go, Scott, do you want to add anything to that? Maybe I'll have the expert address it.
Sure. Scott Thornton with Vaneson Associates, prepared some traffic analysis for the project. So in general, percentage increases, what we're looking at right now is somewhere between 1 and, and 3%. But what Peter mentioned is true in terms of the, of the main two intersections, the Clinton Street and, and Main Street and the Wilcox Circle and Eaton Ave at Main Street. The, the current configuration of them, where the side streets are split and offset, makes for inefficient operation. If we're able to combine those, it'll be, it'll be a big improvement in operations and delay, and queues will get, will get shorter, and it'll be an improvement over the existing conditions, even with the project.
Okay, thank you. And the other question was around, these are multi-bedroom units, I assume, the apartments and the townhouses?
Yeah.
And is there any projection of what that's going to do to the, potentially to the schools?
Let me give you my short answer, and then we'll, we'll probably, you know, talk about it more with the fiscal impact study. Right now, I don't think we're planning on having any threes, but I, we have to confirm whether that's, how that's going to be looked at with the affordability. Because I, there's been discussion that within the affordability, a certain amount of those may have to be threes, which will lend itself to more school age kids. We are certainly not opposed to kids, as everybody knows, but I know it's a concern. The ones and twos is the, will be the vast makeup of the rest of these units. As part of the fiscal impact study, we will estimate what those will look like. It used to be, it used to be like six to seven kids per hundred units was the rule of thumb 20 years ago when I started doing some of the residential. I need to get and figure out what is that now? And where, and how many students or how many kids could you estimate to come out of someplace like this? The data is pretty well refined now, so we will make note and make sure that we are prepared to answer that a little bit better, Bill, when we come back, you know, next time. And again, we have a draft of the fiscal impact study, but most of it's been on the revenue side and not as much on the expense side. So they'll do a better job at estimating how many school age kids will we have and what the impact on the schools will be.
Okay, thank you. And I, I learned too, I grew up in that area, as you know. And I learned that Wilcox Street is, is there now. I never knew that either.
You and me both.
Wilcox Circle. Wilcox Circle.
Counselor Toho. Thank you. A couple of questions. So you referenced in the document 35 feet height for the townhouses in the front, but then the dimensional requirements on one of the PowerPoint sites say 39. Please clarify.
Yeah, it's a little bit of an odd dimension, and we put it in there because of the way that the math might work on the gables and, and whether we, whether, the measurement is, as you, I'm sure you're aware, is the mean average grade around the structure, but then you've got the garage that's not counted in the back. So the garage in the back, you don't see it in the front, is going to, you'll see that full eight to 10 feet in the back. So it's basically there to make sure that we don't trip the 35, but as measured to the peak of the gable. Bob, do we trip the 35 on the peaks of the gable? No. So right now, everything's designed to be at that 35 or under, but it was, when we wrote it, we still, we were still going through the design, the, are we going to, are we going to do gambrels? Are we going to do just gables? Are we going to do some other roof structure? And we ended up incorporating entirely the third story into the roof itself, as opposed to like on a typical gable on a house, where you might go up another eight or 10 feet.
I know this will be, I know this will be hashed out a little bit more, but I personally would like to see it not exceed 35 feet from the street at all, so just, that's one thing. Excuse me. Scott, just a question from you. When you say 1 to 3% increase, is that a 1 to 3% increase in traffic in that area based on this project? What is that 1 to 3%?
Yeah. Yeah, basically on, on Main Street and some of the areas external to the study area during the peak hours.
So we're, so just to be clear, just so I understand, what you're expecting is only a 1 to 3% increase in traffic to that area with the addition of 188 units to Central Square?
So, so we have the, we have the study area that we looked at, which is, which goes up Main Street to, to where the Cinema Drive is. And then we, we went out to the west on Wyman Street, and we went to the south on Main Street out to Mishawam. So, so external to those areas, we're looking at, say, 1 to 3%. Right in this area, in the, in the central square area, it's a much bigger increase.
Do we have that number?
I could, I don't have it in front of me now.
I would love to see that, just because, again, I think every time we come here, I say how much I love traffic studies.
I know you do.
I just, I don't see 1 to 3%, and I know, just, we're going to hash this out and I'll leave it, but I know that is a, I think everyone agrees that Central Square needs some, some love, but I think a lot of people are very concerned with traffic, not only in this area, just throughout the city, right? So this is definitely a big point of contention for me. Lastly, again, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I can tell you that what we're looking at for, for traffic increases from this project is, in the morning, it's about 72 trips entering and exiting, and in the evening, it's about 75. And that accounts for the removal of the 13 or so buildings, the houses that are, that are along Lowell Street. So, and, and Main Street has about 7 to, 7 to 800 cars an hour in this stretch, so it's.
And I think the Place Lane numbers are around 50, ours are 72, and I think Place Lane is somewhere between 50 and 60 cars.
Yeah.
So if you, from a comparison standpoint, just to see what that might look like or feel like, if you would outlook the Place Lane, the ITE numbers for it, but again, the, the actual numbers are like running lower than the ITE.
Do you mind speaking into the microphone when you talk? I'm sorry.
Sorry. I think, I think you're, I can repeat it if necessary.
Do you want him to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Sorry, Ms. Campbell. What I was saying was, the, the numbers for Place Lane, I believe the ITE numbers are somewhere around 50, 50 to 55 peak hour vehicle trips in and out. I think that was the ITE number, but the actual trips are less, less than that. We, it's all documented in the report that we'll give you, but just to give you, again, a scale of what the project may do in terms of the vehicle trips in and out, it's a good one to go there at peak hour and stand across, you know, sit at the, you know, sit at the Lennon's nice, you know, bench or whatever on, on their lawn and look across, and you'll see the amount of traffic coming and going.
Thank you. And lastly, I know this, we're in the conceptual stage here, we're not even talking about the design, and I know at the end of the day, this has to be financially feasible for the petitioner. I like the idea of the first floor amenities in Building B, that's kind of outlined. I really would like to incorporate somehow, if at all possible, some mixed use on the front townhouse area. I don't whether, you know, I don't know how that works, but this is going to be, we're touting this is a nice walkable area, kind of for the, for the community in that area. You know, I think this, this space in general is lacking that coffee shop, that sub shop, something like that. And again, I'm not saying that it has to happen, I would really like to see that. I know I've spoken to some residents in the area that would like to see that, but we'll leave that for design. I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking at this point, but.
Just a quick aside, we've talked about the same thing and whether or not it should be, is it a good thing, is it not? Very much open to having the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for your presentation this evening. Obviously, you know, I was at the neighborhood meeting that the Tachis had put on, and, you know, there were a lot of concerns raised, especially with drainage and traffic. I think those were the, the two big ones. But, you know, I'm looking forward to the committee process, to getting more information on details, hearing from the public, getting those questions kind of coordinated so that we can have a robust discussion. I guess my concern would echo Counselor Mercer Bruins, where if we're going to be removing that portion of Lowell Street, there was parking spots on that street.
Yeah.
There's parking spots across from Jack's Variety that I didn't see delineated in the, in the plan. They weren't on the conception, or the conceptual of the drawing, so I'm hoping those are going to remain.
I don't think it was intentional that they're not there.
Just something to think of moving forward. Because those lines weren't there anymore, so I wanted to make sure that that was there because that would be basically penalizing the small businesses that are there that are already kind of struggling to get by.
Yeah.
The other thing that I would like to see more of with regards to the property, again, a delineation of the height so we can see it a little bit better, especially with residents on the opposite side of Main Street. What is the vantage point that they're going to have now with regards to the townhouses, but also the larger structures that are proposed in the rear?
Yep.
And then also, Joe, what is the current zoning at that site?
It's residential and S1.
Residential and S1?
It's a mix.
Mixed, yeah. I just wanted everybody to know that, so that what, what other types of entities could come in by special permit or by right at those, at the sites. The other thing that I would like, you know, sooner rather than later, I know it's not part of the zoning, but, you know, a primary question I'm getting, because I've already heard from folks with regards to their concerns, is now, when they hear the new entrance to the Boys Club, you know, a decision regarding what would happen with Charles Gardner Way coming out onto Main Street. Because a lot of folks look at that as a, as a contributor to traffic as is right now.
Yeah.
So if we're looking at adding traffic, we should also be looking at ways to diminish the current existing traffic to kind of offset a lot of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, other than that, I mean, I don't want to get too into the weeds with, with regards to specifics this evening, because we'll have committee. I know you're going before the planning board.
Yes.
To have that review.
February 11th.
We were there, we were there last week, the first one, so continue to the 11th.
Okay. Okay, and I, I do appreciate their input as well with regards to zoning matters and look forward to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank all my fellow counselors with their very questions that are on everyone's mind. This is my ward, so I appreciate everyone's concern, and again, we're at the beginning of the process. But just from the chair, whatever studies we do on, for the schools, which you mentioned, for the traffic, let's compare them to what we really have there now as well, with that 17 to 20 units, which I'm going to guess that three quarters, three quarters of those units are vacant now. So I just want to make sure going forward, now's the time to do it before you folks spend a lot of money. Make sure whoever's doing the study knows that they're comparing those units are pretty much vacant now, if I'm correct.
Yep. I, yeah, that's a question, Mr. President. I don't know the answer to what, how many are occupied or not. We can probably find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else before, yes, Counselor Demambo.
So I really enjoy the package you guys put together and the renderings that I'm seeing and that I've seen in the past. Now, you guys did an incredible amount of work on this, and I know there's going to be more work to be done. The benefits I see so far, rejuvenation of that area as a whole, the lining of Clinton Street, and the removal of the old fire station, Station 3, which we all know all about that.
Yeah.
The Wilcox Circle, Lowell Street Island, you know, the redesign of that and making it into a nice, beautiful park with the bushes and the shrubbery and all that stuff, and I'm sure walls and everything else, the renderings I'm seeing, that's a benefit to the city. More green space, all in all. It looks like it's going to be much safer for traffic flow with the lining up of Clinton Street, as well as Wilcox Circle or Lowell Street, how that's, you know, designated and lined up with Eaton and Main Street. That's a plus. Solving the Cummings Brook issues, that's been an ongoing issue in this city for, for decades, you know? And it's about time it gets addressed. Let's, let's stop kicking that can down the road. And it really is a bunch of broken teeth down there, and it would be nice to rejuvenate that, being it's in the center of town.
Yeah.
And it's a highly used area, it's extremely visible. It should be rejuvenated and renovated to the standards we all would like to see in that area. I know I have apartments up in Ward 6, I've got the Woben Heights for 168 units. There was a lot of discussion about the traffic, there was a big panic about that for the 168 units, I was one of them.
Yeah.
I drive through my ward several times every single day. I'm up and down Main Street all the time. I might see a trickle of two or three cars coming out of there at a time, and that's, that's quite a bit. Most of the time, I don't see anything going in or exiting that, that Woben Heights, that development. And yes, I mean, the tax revenue is something we got to be mindful of. I mean, it's, it's on the radar, nobody wants to talk about it, but an increase in tax revenue, it does offset the taxes in other areas and it helps the other people out. And if we can bring more tax revenue in, we're beautifying and bettering that area. And I understand there's an increase of, you know, apartments and townhouses and population and so on and so forth.
Right.
But going from 50,000 to 1.1, 1.1, 1.2?
I think it was around half a million annually and about another million in permit fees.
Fair enough.
But about a, but about a tenfold increase.
About a tenfold increase. That's pretty good. And the fact that it's coming with all of these benefits, and it seems like you guys are willing to fix and, and take care of on, on your dime as part of the project costs. I think that's a win. I look forward to further conversations on this matter and, and this petition, and I look, I look forward to all of the discussions on this. And as of right now, I'm, I'm in, I'm in support of this, the way I'm looking at it right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you both for this great PowerPoint that you gave us tonight. Gives a lot of insight as to what could be going into that area. One thing that I just will caution you is that the schools are going through a redistrict this year. You may want to speak to them at the school department to let them know how many possible students they could be seeing, especially with the redistricting going on.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Demers.
Just one quick more comment as well in general. And I think it would behoove this council to look at other opportunities in the sense of getting more cost benefit analysis done with regards to these types of proposals so that we, whether it's a consultant or whatnot, I know the schools do it. Whenever a new development comes in, they have consultants take a look at the additional units and what the impact on our resources are. I know why the constituent reach out, and that was one of the primary concerns about developments. I think we should be looking at it internally as a city, trying to see what the, what, what those types of resources would be used by, by allowing these developments in the future. Just like a fiscal note in the legislature would take a look at what the impacts are, because we can all talk about the revenue increase, but if the resource is being consumed eaten to that revenue increase, we can't use that revenue increase as a, as a benefit. So I just wanted to caution that.
Just in response, just as a note to that, that was the, I think in your, in your ordinance right now, you actually have a fiscal impact section that if other projects weren't doing it, maybe I, I read.
No, no, no. I under, it's, it's one of those things where, as a, as a city as a whole.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think looking forward, we want to make sure that anytime this council passes a budget or passes a project like this, we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul per se.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and putting ourselves at a disadvantage.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And that's not a negative connotation about this project.
No, 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 I, no, I, I've written many of those fiscal impact reports, and I know we will be doing it, so I didn't know if you weren't getting one of the projects.
That's an important cog in the process.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second to open the public hearing. The role, please.
Motion to open the public hearing. Counselor Campbell.
Aye.
Counselor Demers.
Aye.
Counselor Demambo.
Aye.
Counselor Farulo.
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Aye.
Counselor Papalatto.
Aye.
Counselor Toro.
Aye.
Counselor Viola.
Aye.
President Dillon.
Aye. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Ken Polly, North Woben. Thank you, President Dillon, counsel. Well, this is exciting. Well, this is exciting. This is good stuff. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Like, this could be pretty amazing. Thoughts of mine is we have state mandated density that's been required, which we took in. I wanna kinda follow up on Lou, or Mr. Demambo, Councilmember Demambo, appreciate you. There's more value that can be added to the community if we delineated some of the density of our existing zoning overlay. And I'm, I'm gonna assume, well, I don't like to assume anymore, right? But maybe the central square overlay isn't the correct strategy. Maybe it's using the MBTA, where we take that MBTA bill and we say density 45, number 135 height. They basically drew the barriers in for us. And you can use that as an arbitrage to delineate the existing, I don't know, we could probably remove 10% of that required density. Then there's no restrictions on income for that housing as well. Good quality stuff. So those are just some brief thoughts that I had and wanted to express that as this goes to committees and there's some real estate across the street, that maybe, you know, I feel about our treasury and buffering those coffers a little bit, maybe we could add some value to our existing real estate as well. So thanks, guys. Appreciate you all. And Mr. Tocchi, you know, thank you, guys. Looks amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this? How are you tonight, sir?
I'm well, I'm well. I'm Bob Zwicker. I live directly across the street, up on the hill, so I'm very familiar. I've been there 24 years.
I'm sorry, what is your address?
Uh, 663 Main Street.
Thank you.
So I've been there 24 years. You know, I think what they're designing looks, looks beautiful, not really against the project if all the details are worked out and we make sense of it all and the impact on the, the area is good. You know, I, there's definitely a lot of things that need to be worked out with the density and things and the, the structure height, things like that. A little disconcerting is, I don't know, sounds like they bought the properties across the street for me in Central Square about 20 years ago, and it has looked horrible for about 20 years. So to think that their number one priority is to improve and make the area look better, they've kinda not done that for a while. So I've invested a lot of money into my property, a lot of taxes, and, and it's always been an eyesore. I'm putting in abatis to try to grow up, to block the houses across the street, certain things like that. So I do have some concerns on that. The Tocchi light that went in, not sure why that went in, that made the traffic worse. Nobody knows there's a light across the street from Tocchi when they're driving up Main Street, so that's why people aren't stopping at the right spot. Just never really made sense, so I'm not sure why exactly that light went in and they don't just come out of their, their parking space like anyone else or parking lot and turn. I, I don't understand the, and I'm sorry to rattle off a lot of things here, but I don't quite understand why the Clinton Street coming right across and into the area makes the most sense and put all that traffic right in one intersection when maybe the entrance and exit could be a little bit closer to the Wyman Street intersection and alleviate people coming or going before they get to that intersection, 'cause that intersection is pretty tough sometimes. Already, I choose to not go there and come up around Newberry Street and cut around Amishewam and come in from the other direction just to get home. Ways has killed the area. I can tell when there's traffic on 95, 'cause you can't get out of my driveway on Clinton Street. It's backed up all the way to the four-way stop, continues to Salem Street, all the way up to BJ's. It just kills, kills the area. Obviously, going down by Woben Village isn't the best option these days, and there's really no way to get out. So that is, that is definitely a concern as well. Obviously, the 1% to 3% traffic, that's not correct. We knew that. I believe Hart Place is a much older demographic, so I don't think that report really has much to do with the type of demographic that would be here. Obviously, we know the children per 100 units is probably off, 'cause I'm one unit with three children. So there's probably gonna be a lot more, and that's gonna have a big impact. Parking spaces, if they're one and a half per unit, I guess I'd like to know how many bedrooms are on average to go with that. You know, husband, wife, or two people, adults in the house, could be two cars, and then as the kids get older, could be three cars, could be four cars. Don't know the bedroom status and how that would all unfold. So overall, I just think there's a lot of details that really need to be thought about and worked out. What's gonna happen with the, the Wyman School? What that's gonna do to the, the area? What's gonna happen at the movie theater if a Home Depot moves in there? There's just so much that's happening in, in this area that we really need to put, put some thought into it. I, I did like the idea here, maybe some retail shops on the first floor. There's not really anywhere to walk to and get anything. You know, I think a lot of the people from the area miss jacks, being able to go down there and get a sandwich, and there's just none of those amenities. So I think that would be something that would be worth looking into. And I look forward to, you guys all had a lot of great input on it, so I look forward to everybody's input and discussions as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? Yes, sir?
Good evening again. I figured if I'm coming out in this cold, I might also get a nut bang for my buck. John Heslin, 36 Clinton Street. I'm generally in favor of this proposal. I, I don't see as many developers as you guys do, but I'm guessing you don't see one as enthusiastic about the design plan as John Tocchi. And I appreciate that, because I think he cares about what it's gonna look like, what the final, final result will look like. I share some of the concerns you guys have already brought up in terms of the height of the two back buildings and the, and the final number of units back there. But generally, I think it's, it's, it's gonna improve that whole area. The one thing I wanna stress most of all is that section of Lowell Street, please, for the love of God, keep that, keep that closed. Close that up, expand the green, and make that area, that's what's gonna make a big difference in that area. And Central Square, you know, I don't, I'm at the age now where I'm saying, you know, in my day, but we, we, we had the Weaver Park, we had the second, the second field up top, so we got rid of all the green space up there. And, and then there's, you know, we lost all of Spence Farm, that no one, everyone knew that was gonna be there forever. And then when the much-needed and beautiful fire station went down, again, we took part of the forest to take care of that. This is just a small bit of green space, and it's gonna make a big difference. And I'm begging you to make sure that stays into this, in this proposal. So that's the big thing that I like about this. And I do wanna thank John and Peter for the meeting back in July, because it wasn't required, and that's why we like those meetings. We don't come out of those meetings with any firm plans or firm promises, but it does inform us of what's going on, and their presentation here tonight is similar to the presentation they gave in July, and it's up online. So people, so a number of people who weren't there in July have seen that same presentation. And I would hope that other developers follow suit when they come in front of this council, that they would have already had neighborhood meetings and had these things in place. And this is what we need. I can't read, I'm not an engineer. I don't wanna be an engineer. I don't wanna know all the rules and the ins and outs. I want pretty pictures. Tell me what you're gonna do. And then, and then you better do something similar to what I see too. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Step right forward. Just state your name and address, please. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Carol Nagel, 723 Main Street, Woben. I grew up in Central Square. I knew it was Wilcock Circle, but I didn't know it was Wyman Street, so I did just learn that today. But I love this project. It's absolutely beautiful. You know, if it all ends up coming to fruition, it will be, I'm not a total fan of closing off Wyman Street, but I don't agree that the traffic is gonna be a problem. I drive by Place Lane all the time, never see cars coming out of there, never see cars stuck there. It's just not a problem. You know, my son lives over in Inwood. Anytime I come in and out of there, they don't have a light. There's never a problem. So honestly, what I would love to see is to eliminate the light at Clinton Street. Eliminate it. Put in maybe a pedestrian light for the Boys and Girls Club. We have a light at Eaton Ave. We have a light at Amishwam. Why we need another light, I don't know. I don't think we're gonna need it. As far as straightening out the, the intersection, that may cause problems, but right now, like they were saying, that why they put that extra lane in for the Tocchi Road, I don't know. Nobody pays attention to it. So we're the ones stuck at the light all the time. The problem to me is north of the light at, at Eaton Ave. And I've talked to city councilors about it. I've talked to engineering about it. I've talked to the previous planning director about it. If they simply changed the southbound to not a delayed light, that would alleviate the problem, because the northbound side has the old Wyman. You can get around those cars. But Eaton Ave, if people turn a left to go up Eaton Ave, they don't move to the left. So that causes my house now on Main Street to be like Hampton Beach at 5:00 on a Friday night, every single night, and most mornings at school time. If they just changed that light cycle. So what I'm trying to say is, everyone will come and do this project and leave and go back to their homes and leave us with terrible traffic problems. So even when you ask for someone to look at this light cycle, just simply look at this light cycle to see if we can make a change, it doesn't happen. Everyone tells you how easy it is to do and what an easy change will be, but it does not happen. So I would love to see some feedback just on that light to alleviate some of the traffic north of there, because in between there, isn't that bad. I just would love to see that light gone, totally gone somehow. And I don't think the traffic's gonna be that big of an issue. But that's just my input. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight?
Hey, I'm good. I'm Rachel Cooper. I live at 6 Blake Street. So I live right around the corner in that picture. I have some disjointed thoughts and comments for tonight and some questions. But, so my kids walk down the sidewalk right here as they walk to school every day to the hurled Wyman. So I, I overall support the project. My focus is on safety, particularly pedestrian safety, not only for residents like myself who walk frequently in this area, but there's so much unsupervised, independent children moving around this area that I hadn't thought of removing that light. I don't know what that would do for car traffic, but we need controlled intersections here for kids to cross, because the kids go to the club from the Kennedy, kids go to the club from the hurled Wyman. So I'm one of those families, as the Tocchis know, that cut through their property every day to get to the hurled Wyman, and my kids cut through with the club kids after school unsupervised. So I really appreciate the part of the plan that is to continue to allow that and perhaps make that safer. I think that's a real asset for the community. I also support the closing off of Lowell Street there that we can see in the picture, provided that it does work for the traffic, which I'm, I'm not sure about. I'd like to hear more about that. I think that that section of the street right now is rather unsafe for pedestrians because of all of the sidewalk or the driveways that come off there. So I think it'll increase pedestrian safety, and I really appreciate the added green I'm most concerned about Charles Gardner Way and the entrance exit from the club and the Tocchi property, because it sounds like, while the details aren't fleshed out, I'm interested to hear what comes, but if we put a light at the entrance to the property that'll have a rotary that will go to the club and leave Charles Gardner Way open, that actually bumps those two roads closer together than they are now, and one will be controlled and one won't be controlled. And even if you make it right turn only, cars that are going and do a right turn don't look to the left for pedestrians, and those pedestrians are children going to the club without adults. And so I have real concerns about leaving those two roads, even if one has restrictions on which way you can turn. I would love it as a pedestrian, as a bike path, that, that's all fine, but if they stay two roads for cars, I think that's less safe than what we have today, because you're connecting them in the back, so you're essentially adding another, another dangerous place for kids I'm not sure how I feel about where things will come with traffic, but I have concerns about comparing this property to Place Lane, because the demographics of Place Lane skew different than I expected the demographics here in that they are condos, not apartments, and it's had a recent slide to include younger residents at Place Lane, but it's a, it's a much older demographic and skews retired. And so I don't, I think that the traffic that we see there will be different than the traffic that we see here. So I'm interested in hearing more about that. There was a comment about selling versus renting. The Tocchis know that I want properties to be sold if possible. I want people to own the properties in this neighborhood if possible. And lastly, I am concerned about the number of units, and I would like to see it come down to the number that they shared this summer. So that's all for now. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? Seeing no one.
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the regular meeting of the City Council on February 18th, and that the matter be referred to the Committee on Ordinance, Charter and Rules.
Second.
A motion in the second. Roll, please.
Second, to continue public hearing to February 18th, and that this matter be referred to the Committee on Ordinance, Charter and Rules. Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Demambo?
Aye.
Counselor Farulo?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Papalatto?
Aye.
Counselor Toro?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Dillon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda under committee reports is an order of that the $30,000 be transferred from U-Haul Olympia Avenue account to Pine Street Crossing Light Account. Committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted.
Second.
A motion in the second. Roll, please.
That the committee report from Finance be adopted. Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Demambo?
Aye.
Counselor Farulo?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Papalatto?
Aye.
Counselor Toro?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Dillon?
Aye.
On the order amending Woben Municipal Code, Section 2-180, based as for the Public Works Facilities Manager, a committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted. Second.
There is a motion in the second. Roll, please.
For the committee report to be adopted from Ordinance, Charter and Rules. Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Demambo?
Aye.
Counselor Farulo?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Papalatto?
Aye.
Counselor Toro?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Dillon?
Aye.
From the Committee on Personnel, on the order that the City Council fill vacancy
in the position of City Engineer, appointment of Alexander J. Rozicki, a committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted. Second.
Motion in the second. Roll, please.
Adopt the committee report from Personnel. Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Demambo?
Aye.
Counselor Farulo?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Papalatto?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Dillon?
Aye.
From the Committee on Public Safety and License, on the petitions for 2025 renewal
of second-class motor vehicle sales licenses by the following: Maurice Saba, DBA Monphilav Auto Care, 317 Monphilav, ENC Auto Brokers LLC, 7 Harrison Avenue; McSheffreys SE LLC, DBA McSheffreys of the South End, 75 Main Street; and Cambridge Road Auto Service Inc., DBA Woben Plaza Shell, 293 Cambridge Road. A committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make the motion that the committee report be adopted. Second.
A motion in the second. Roll, please.
Committee report to adopt, roll call. Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Demers? On the petition for new second-class motor vehicle sales license for Alex Auto and Repair at five oh five Main Street, a committee report was received, ought to pass with a limit of ten vehicles for sale.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted. Second.
A motion and a second, roll, please.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye.
Counselor Demers?
Aye.
Counselor Demambo?
Aye.
Counselor Farulo?
Aye.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Aye.
Counselor Papalato?
Aye.
Counselor Toro?
Aye.
Counselor Viola?
Aye.
President Dillon?
Aye.
Motion passed.